Council members to the dice please. About to start our meeting. So our final item of the day are our water rates and last meeting, we took public comments on our water rates. The public does have another opportunity to speak today as evidenced by the cards that some of you have turned in already. If you would like to make a comment, we have comment cards in the back. Don't feel like that if you don't turn in a card, you can't make a comment because you still will be allowed to comment. But with that, I will allow staff to make their presentation on our water rates. Tommy?
Thank you, Council President, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney. Thank you all. Thank everyone here for coming in today to talk about the consideration of a recommendation for water rate increases. What I wanted to start with was just kind of making sure we had a kind of a good foundation on what we're talking about tonight and the basis for which we're trying to make an investment decision in the community. So I want to start with is just, this is something we can't live without. It's water, we can't live without it. When you look at the system that we're talking about, it's a public water supply system. It is dedicated primarily exclusively, I should say, to public health and safety. When you get into this business and you study at school, you wind up opening up the textbooks and the first thing that you read when you look in the textbooks on this subject is the history. The history of public water systems is one where they talk to you about how they came about to become in, and the evolution of them as they grew. And so you look at those and one of the things they're trying to emphasize to you is that these systems exist to protect public health and safety. When these systems don't exist or they're managed poorly, bad things happen to people. People get sick and people die. And as an example of that, we are very fortunate here that we have these types of systems. But if you look at the World Health Organization put out a report last year and they identified that of the top 10 causes of death in the world, the number seven cause of death is lack of access to clean, safe drinking water. And that above it are things like cancer and pulmonary and respiratory and HIV, those things. But the number seven cause of death in the world is lack of access to clean, safe drinking water. It's the number two cause of death of children under five in the world. And so what I wanted to do was start by talking about that this is really a public health and safety question we are about to have and a presentation and an investment plan that we're presenting to the City Council. And so when I got here, there was a lot of talk about a lot of different things that this was involving. I don't know how it relates to a baseball park and there's a place called Granite Park. I don't know where that is, but it's somewhere and we're giving money from these people to make people who have too much money. And there's this place called Sega that, I don't know. I just know that when I got here, the focus I needed to put on it was a public health and safety question. That's how I've looked at it. And when you think about it as a public health and safety issue, you have to realize that this is a very heavily regulated industry. Okay? The original drinking water standards for this industry go back 100 years. 1914 is when they were first originally published and they've evolved since that time. And we put out data every month to the state. The state receives our reports and they know before anybody else knows the condition of our well system and our groundwater system and our surface water treatment system. So we're really focused on that this is a heavy regulated industry and it's been around for 100 years as its current form. And so when you think about all the things that goes to deliver this service, there are data points that you can look at. And so there's a lot of data out there related to how this works. And so when I came to looking at this situation, I wanted to focus on, well, let me see what the data says. And so I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the data that I've looked at in the last eight months and how it's come to the recommendation that we have in front of you today. So the first thing I wanted to data point is the fact that we lose a million and a half gallons of water in the drainage base, in the groundwater basin that we currently occupy. We are the single largest municipal extractor of water out of that basin. It is something that we do every day, every year, and we lose that amount of water. So that's one data point to consider. The groundwater table is falling and it has continued to fall. The second data point that you look at, when you look at, again, at the public health and safety question, there's two things you look at. One is the quantity question, how much do we have? And then you look at the quality question of what we have, what is the quality of that water? On the second quantity question is the ranking that the state went through to identify the conditions of groundwater systems in the state of California. They identified 515 basins, used information and data to establish some criteria and score each of those basins. And then the basin that we exist, that we operate in, is the 17th worst basin in terms of groundwater overdraft. So on the quantity question, there's plenty of data out there to suggest that we have a groundwater overdraft issue that needs attention. The state also saw that issue and the governor signed a bill in September that identified a need to implement this or enact the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And it's pretty clear what they're expecting. Use groundwater without causing undesirable results. And those, and in the law, it has those things defined. Undesirable result is lowering the groundwater levels. We do that today. Significantly unreasonable reduction of storage in the aquifer, we do that today. And significant unreasonable degraded water quality, we do that today. What I'd like to do is ask Dave Orth to come up and address the council. He had a heavy hand, he had a significant role in helping to craft this legislation.
Thank you.
In helping to craft this legislation. And he's currently leading a group effort of regional water users and districts working together to identify our need to develop a groundwater sustainability agency and a groundwater sustainability plan. I'll leave Dave Orth.
Thank you. Good evening. Just a couple of brief comments. As Tommy mentioned, I'm the general manager of the Kings River Conservation District. We are a regional water management agency created by the state of California to work with local agencies in developing integrated and cooperative regional management structures to address water-related issues in the Kings River watershed. As has mentioned, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act changes the way we have to manage groundwater. And our district has been very involved in groundwater management over the last several decades. But the act now requires that we manage groundwater at the sub-basin level. The city of Fresno is part of the King's Sub Basin, as you saw in this previous presentation, which is a very large sub-basin in the southern San Joaquin Valley, covers 976,000 acres, bordered in the north by the San Joaquin River, the south by the Kings River, the east by the Sierra Foothills, and on the west at the trough of the valley, we butt up against Westlands Water District. Very large groundwater resource that we have to now collectively manage to the sustainability standard that's on your screen. The act requires local agencies to create groundwater sustainability agencies cooperatively to demonstrate that the sub-basin will be sustainably managed and the agency must be formed by June 30th of 2017. The act defines eligible local agencies as those public agencies with water or land use responsibilities and authorities, and that includes entities like the city of Fresno, the county of Fresno, and your local water agencies, including the Kings River Conservation District. The act requires these groundwater sustainability agencies, once they are formed by June of 2017, to adopt a groundwater sustainability plan by January 31st of 2020 in basins that are critically overdrafted. The King's Basin is critically overdrafted. So we will have to adopt a basin, sub-basin level sustainability plan by uniting all of our agencies together to reach the sustainability standard. And then the act requires that the plan contain elements that demonstrate sustainable management of groundwater within a 20-year planning period after plan adoption and that that plan contain measurable objectives and performance milestones. Fortunately, this region has a history of working together and developing coordinate, and through the last several years, we've worked with the city of Fresno and some of the other local agencies to develop coordinated monitoring systems and a basin-level surface groundwater model. The city has joined 15 other local agencies in a joint powers agreement to develop a sub-basin-wide integrated planning effort with objectives that include elimination of annual overdraft. And our current target is to accomplish that well before the Sustainable Groundwater Management deadline of 2040. And our integrated plan, of which the city is part of, includes various projects, including recharge conservation and utilization of our floodwaters when they are available. So building on that coordination, the Kings River Conservation District, working with local agencies, including the city of Fresno, is working to develop an effort to coordinate needs and interests regarding compliance with the act. Initially, we have a draft memorandum of understanding which will serve as a foundation for evaluation of alternative governance and planning structures. And I think it's critical to stress yet again, as I close, that in order to meet the Sustainable Groundwater Management objectives of sub-basin-level sustainability, it's essential that we work together. And we have begun doing that through this memorandum of understanding. And we've met several times with representatives from city staff, as well as a lot of the other local agencies in the sub-basin. Let me just close by noting it's important to recognize that failure to act at the local level and comply with the requirements and meet the deadlines that are built in the statute will open the door for intervention by the State Water Resources Control Board. That is crystal clear in the act. Failure to form the GSA or the Groundwater Sustainability Agency by June of 17, failure to adopt the plan by January of 2020, and failure to implement that plan in accordance with our own developed measurable objectives and milestones will give the State Water Resources Control Board the opportunity to step in and manage for us. We can't take that risk. Groundwater is much too critical a resource for our region and must be managed locally and we're working hard to make that happen. So I look forward to the rest of the discussion this evening and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dave. There's been some comments in the community that we have not been engaged in a cooperative effort to get this process up and running. And rest assured, we are in a cooperative effort, looking to get our compliance together with our regional partners on the Sustainability Agency and the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. So more specifically to the city of Fresno, the things that are kind of concerning to us are the number of wells that are actually going dry right now. We have 266 active wells, 23 wells removed from service if we continue to decline. We just can't lower those pumps anymore and the water sits just right at where the pump is. And if we continue to lose water, those wells will be taken out of service. If we have groundwater decline similar to what we had last year, which was a four-foot loss last year, we'll probably lose another 21 wells this year. So the issues of groundwater overdrafting in the city of Fresno are very real. They're occurring today and we have to do a couple of things. One, work with our partners on the global Kings River Sub Basin, but address the issues that we have right here at home in the wells that we currently own and operate. Now let's talk about quality. Quality is the other thing that you look at when you try and assess the condition of a water, public water system. And so on the quality side, right now, we have 82 wells that are contaminated. We're not treating for them, but they have contamination identified. And I can tell you that it becomes a concern to us because the way this process works is we have a well, we monitor all the wells for quality and a well is clean, 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 and then suddenly the well gets a pop on a contaminant. And suddenly it's the canary in the coal mine. We know we've got an issue and we have to start watching it. And it's not uncommon for us to get a pop on a well and for that well, that contamination level to grow and grow and grow and grow to the point, and then we have two options at that point. One option is to remove the well from service. The other one is to put treatment on it. And one costs money, the other one doesn't, but it damages our ability to deliver water to the system. So on the quality side, we have a new water quality standard coming up, 123 TCP. That's in 73 of the wells. We've estimated it's about $170 to $300 million to address that particular issue. You can see on the map here where these wells are located. It's primarily in the southeast portion of our city. And I'd like to introduce Cassie Chauhan to kind of talk a little bit about the quality issues currently existing here in the city of Fresno.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I just wanted to spend a few minutes, I won't take too much of your time, but a few minutes emphasizing some of the statements that Tommy has made and reinforce some of the items that were included in a letter that we recently issued to the mayor. One of those things is that we get a huge amount of data from the city each and every month. It's a large packet of information that comes in and that goes along with the fact that Tommy mentioned, that it is a heavy, heavily regulated industry. And we take that regulation of the water industry very seriously and we monitor and look at those reports very closely each and every month so that we can identify any trends and any wells that are looking like they're going to become out of compliance. We monitor both raw water, so those without treatment, and then those ones with treatment so that we can make sure from the point where that water comes out of the ground or out of the lake or river as surface water, to the point where it reaches the customer's tap, it is in compliance with every drinking water regulation that's out there. The city has been down this road before. We're talking about 123 TCP. It's not the first new regulation that comes, has come out and it will not be the last. And I'll just mention 20 years ago or so, DBCP became a regulated contaminant. That was in 1992. And at that time, the city was faced with the same challenge that they're faced today. They had all of these groundwater sources. One day they're in compliance, the next day they're out of compliance because a new MCL is adopted. At that time, the city conducted the initial monitoring that was prescribed in the DBCP regulation. The wells were determined to be out of compliance if they exceeded that MCL. A compliance order was issued and then the road to compliance began. The same will be true with 123 TCP. The city will be, have an opportunity to conduct that initial monitoring. They will then, a compliance determination will be made and then compliance orders will be issued. It's prescribed by the law. It's not something that we have discretion over. If the city has to use a source that does not meet the drinking water standard, a compliance order will be issued. And what does that compliance order look like? That compliance order includes a lot of things. It talks about the regulations that you are violating and then it requires, has directives in it. And one of those directives will be to submit a plan and time schedule for getting into compliance. How you're going to finance that, how you're going to, what steps you're going to take and how you're ultimately going to get into compliance. The compliance orders always contain a compliance deadline and that deadline is typically three years. We do have the ability to extend that deadline as long as we know the utility is making progress towards getting into compliance. That compliance order, another big part of it is the city will have to notify every customer that receives water from the city of Fresno that the water does not meet the drinking water standards and they will have to continue to do that until all of the water is back into compliance. So I just wanted to be clear on that, what that compliance order looks like and the steps that the state will have to take. I also wanted to point out that this is what we do. This is why we exist. We exist to make sure that people are not getting sick from the water that they drink. And we issue compliance orders all of the time. And if you don't believe me, you can talk to some of our friends in the local area. We have many water systems, city of Colinga, city of Huron, Lanier, Livingston, San Anellen, the list goes on and on, that are in violation of SAM, Primary Drinking Water Standard, and they're under compliance order and we're monitoring closely what steps they're taking to get back into compliance. I just want to finish with our mission is to protect public health. We want to make sure that the water delivered by the city of Fresno is not causing anyone to become sick. That's our duty and our responsibility as taxpayers to the people that are served by the city of Fresno. And we have our discretion authority, our enforcement authority, rather, to be able to accomplish that goal. I'm available for any questions that you might have and I thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
So we have a quantity issue. We've overdrafted. We have a quality issue. We have contamination in the wells here in the city of Fresno. So we have to come up with, put a plan together to try and address both those things. And so the first thing we start with is the need to comply with laws and regulations. Again, we've talked about it. There are quantity laws that we are going to have to comply with. There are quality laws that we're going to have to comply with. And then we have to allocate those costs and there's laws that say how we have to allocate the cost to do those measures to address these quality and quantity issues for public health and safety. The plan is built around a surface water treatment plan, which has been on the books for 25 years. Two plants have been on the books for 25 years, a northeast and a southeast plant. And again, the objective then 25 years ago was to address groundwater overdrafting, groundwater quantity, groundwater contamination, and to bring the mountain water into the city so that we could let those wells, so we could terminate the use of those wells. The plan does include continued enhanced conservation. You see all these beautiful bags up here and so we really are really wanting to focus and emphasize that this is not a plan so that we can have water, so that we can just be less efficient with it. We have a plan that expected that we will be more efficient with the water. And so we'll continue to work with the community on that. The rehabilitation replacement, our infrastructure, it's a 400-year replacement cycle now with this proposed investment plan. We hope to get that down to 200 years, but it is something that definitely needs to be addressed. It costs more to fix something after it breaks than it does to proactively get out there and make the replacement in advance. And that's our plan with this recommended $429 million investment. And then finally, as part of the plan is to continue our recharge program. Again, Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control District, FID, city of Clovis, others will be partners that we will rely on to help us use every available gallon of surface water that we can put back into the ground and get this recharged and get our groundwater recovering. So the projects that are in the five-year capital plan have been well talked about and there's a lot out there. Surface water treatment facility, 186 million, raw water pipelines to bring water from the Kings River and into the southeast surface water treatment plant and from the Frank Kern Canal to the northeast surface water treatment plant. We have the finished water pipelines that'll get the water out into the community. We have the renewal and replacement program, 82 million, and then the groundwater recharge program, 6.4 million. The original financing assumptions are shown there, 50 million SRF loan and $290 million revenue bonds. Thanks to the efforts of Councilmember Brandow and our friend, Mr. Perea at the state delegation, we were able on February 17th to get a letter from the state identifying that a suitable loan for the plant was identified, for the southeast surface water treatment plant was identified as $186 million SRF loan, 1.663, 30 years, and that winds up saving the rate payers $104 million. And that has reduced now our requirements for the revenue bond from 290 million to 154 million. However, next Thursday, we will be bringing applications to the City Council to submit applications for the balance of the revenue, for the balance of the 154 so that in total we will be able to secure, or at least apply for, state financing for the entire capital program with the exception of the 88 million that we're doing pay-go cash. And what I'd like to do is ask Mr. Polhemus to come up. He's with the State Division of Financial Assistance. These are the individuals that we've been working with to get the loan documents in order and to prepare the applications. And I think you wanted to share with the status where we are.
Thank you very much. My pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Darren Polhemus. I'm Deputy Director for the Division of Financial Assistance at the State Water Resource Control Board. We're very pleased to be able to work with the city on this project and provide financing. We operate the drinking water SRF and the clean water SRF projects. We actually have several clean water SRF projects with the city of Fresno right now as well. So we, it's kind of our pleasure to be able to offer a really low-interest loan and great financing terms for all the cities of California to take advantage of and prosecute projects like this. As was mentioned, it's a 1.63% loan. That's incredible savings when you compare it to now and it's the lowest I've ever seen it for us. We historically have averaged around 2.3%, but as everybody knows, interest rates are incredibly low and we're drafting with those right now. So the time for an investment is certainly prime at the moment. Obviously, it's a loan and so any loan has to be conditioned upon our evaluation of a city's ability to repay that loan. So we're obviously working with you and tonight's a big decision for you to basically make a determination as to can those revenues be there to support that loan? This loan is definitely contingent upon a demonstration by the City Council and by the city of Fresno that they have the resources to not only repay the loan, but to properly operate the facility going forward in a, in a fashion that would make the state's investment worthwhile. So I do encourage that. I guess I'll leave you with two little points that kind of, I think will create the stage for you. So we get, I have the pleasure of working throughout the state with a lot of cities and we do about every four-year survey throughout the state. And the state of California is facing drinking water investment, at least of what we can enumerate, of $39 billion. And so while the number here for you seems big and it's big for a city like Fresno, trust me when I can tell you that the capital investment need in this state of California is immense and 39 billion is a big number to be facing and we're going to have to whittle away with that one, one investment at a time. And the other thing that I can say is it, from my understanding of your project, that you're, you're right on track with what most of the cities in California are thinking of. Is it diversifying your water portfolio? It's important to have a mix of different sources and a different type. And this project, I think, exemplifies that forward thinking and trying to bring apart that. So we're very pleased to be able to participate in that and assist as we can and certainly I'll be here for questions.
So a point of emphasis there would just be that they've done the survey, all states do the survey, $39 billion in need for water infrastructure. We've been talking about looking at the Prop 1 stuff. That's about $7 billion. We are at the head of the line for this particular funding source. And again, next Thursday, we will bring to you the applications to finish off the balance of our capital investment need for this, for this particular program. So what does the project look like? We have the raw water pipe, at the very top, we have the raw water pipeline from the Frank Kern Canal. That'll feed the existing northeast surface water treatment plant. The dash line shows a finished water transmission main that's already in existence. We built that earlier. You see that the raw water pipeline that's running east-west along 180 there, that is the Kings River pipeline. That'll bring water from the Kings River into the new southeast surface water treatment plant. Southeast surface water treatment plant is noted there. And then we have, again, the long, the big transmission mains that will then help us to distribute this water throughout the community. One of the questions that's been asked is why put the plant there? And the simple answer is we were engineers, we were lazy, and we wanted to get a straight distance between where the water supply source was and where the water plant is going to be. And so when you look at that particular, where we're getting the water from, you can see it is an ideal situation where the Frank Kern Canal and the Kings River join so that we have the opportunity to grab both sets of water at that location. And you can see it gets into the Fresno Canal, which is, which is property of the Fresno Irrigation District. It'll come into our intake and then we will bring that into, so it's just a straight shot across and we pick up the water right here where all these fantastic little raw water conveyance systems currently exist. So let's talk a little bit about the system, just how we operate it. And we talked about the quality, quantity issues. We're overdrafting, without question. We have a quality issue and we have, which is the contamination, without question. So how do we operate the system under those conditions? So right now, we have the 266 wells. Our PG&E budget is $1 million per month for the well, for the groundwater pumping system. And we have four types of wells that we've kind of identified in the system. We have 29 wells that are contaminated. Cassie talked about the DBCP ones, the nitrate ones. Where we are treating that water before it goes to the community. Last year, that was available to us for about 17,500 acre feet. We have another 82 wells we talked about earlier, 32,281 acre feet it produced last year. It's contaminated. There are hits on those. The regulation's coming. Other ones are starting to creep up. They're contaminating, they're creeping up toward the maximum contaminant level. They're not currently treated, but they will soon have to be treated and it's pending. There's 82 of our wells. 23 of the wells, we got 8,135 acre feet out of them last year. They're soon to be dry because of the dropping water levels. The pumps are down at as low as they can go and we can't get them any further. If we have another year like last year, those pumps will be out of service. The fourth wells are the wells we just, there's no issue. We, believe it or not, we have some wells, we don't have any issues. And we have 132 of those. And last year, they put out 56,000 acre feet of water for us. And then we pump that, we take that combination of wells, blend it and pump it into the system and we meter it. The takeaway on this slide, though, is our current groundwater profile. 56,000 acre feet is coming from non-compromised wells and about 58,000 acre feet is coming from compromised wells. They either have a quality issue or a quantity issue and they are at risk and they present a risk to the community. What I really want to emphasize here and I want to make sure it's in the record, this is a condition that does not occur overnight. It doesn't just, not here last year and shows up this year. This is something that's been chronically going on in the city of Fresno for years. I want it clear, for the record, the city of Fresno's groundwater supply system is compromised. It has diminished capacity. It presents a risk to public health and safety, without question. That's what the data suggest and that's what we're operating right now. And it's something we need to address. So how we operate this system right now, we have the wells we pump in, we have the two mountain water sources that we have at Millerton Lake and Pine Flat Reservoir. We pull off water out of those, those systems and currently send it to the northeast surface water treatment plant, 30 million gallons a day. We then send some of our water to groundwater to recharge basins. And one of the things we will have to do going forward- And one of the things we will have to do going forward, as Dave indicated, is talk about, is present a water balance and our water budget on how we're performing. We'll do this at our scale, what is the city of Fresno doing, and we'll combine ours with the regional scale, all the other partners, and together, we've got to present that data in a way that demonstrates to the state that we are sustainable in terms of not overdrafting the aquifer. So what you can see here is, last year, our demand was 128,000 acre feet. Congratulations to the community, great job in conserving. Of that, we met 19,000, about 20,000 acre feet with surface water, and we wound up having to over, to pull 108,000 acre feet out of the ground. We were able to get 40,000 acre feet into recharge basins, and the net impact we had on the groundwater system last year was 68,000 feet, acre feet of overdraft. That's something we have done year in, year out, for probably the last 50 years. But last year, it was a little more pronounced. For the longest time, it's been losing about a foot a year, and last year, we lost four feet. And so it's starting to accelerate, and it's something we're concerned about, and it's something we need to address. What our plan is, is to bring in 80, build an 80 MGD water plant to southeast, and then that, so that we could produce 110,000 acre feet of surface water for the community. And then, under that scenario, we would then have, use 18,000 acre feet of groundwater, recharge it about 32,000 acre feet, and we would have had a positive impact on the groundwater system. So it's like making a contribution to, you know, the fund balance. It's like making a contribution to your savings account. That's the situation we're trying to get to with this, with this plan, and it's something that we have to demonstrate to the state, that we have a plan, we have funding and financing in place to accomplish this objective. So how's the system gonna work? Right now, what you can see is we are, water production with wells on and the Northeast Surface Water Treatment Plant, 2020 maximum day. We use 2020 because that's when the new water plant will be in place. So by 2020, the maximum day demand, we will need to deliver to the system. If we did nothing, the do-nothing alternative, is 131 wells will need to be operating to pump water to the system. Of that, 22 of the wells are contaminated, and as you can see, most of those contaminated wells are in the southeast. Once we flip the switch, so this will be, in effect, we will be operating the system like this until about May of 2020, and then of June of 2020, after we rerate the plant to 80 MGD, we'll flip the switch, run 80 MGD to the plant, and this will be what'll happen to the system. We will have zero contaminated wells operating, and we will go from needing 131 wells to feed the system to 87 wells feeding the system. That's the strategy we're proposing to do. That's how we will turn the wells off to address both the quantity issue of overdrafting and the quality issue of contamination. One idea that's been proposed, and we've evaluated, is, well, don't build an 80 MGD Surface Water Treatment Plant, just build a 30 MGD expansion to the Northeast Surface Water Treatment Plant, and that's what this looks like. In 2020 maximum day, we still need 108 wells to operate, and what you'll notice is that the 22 contaminated wells still need to remain in operation in the southeast part of town. And the reality is, it's just difficult to move all that water from the north side of the plant, north side of the city, down into the south side, south part of the city. It's just no benefit to those individuals on the contaminated wells to just expand the Northeast Surface Water Treatment Plant. So let's talk about the water balance, because this is what we're gonna have to present to the state at some point, to present our strategy for complying with the Groundwater Sustainability Act. And this is what we'll do, we'll model it for them. On the left, very far left, is the total system demand in the last seven years, six years, 2007 to 2013. You can see we went from 165,000 acre feet down to 141,600. Our surface water allocations is the second column over, that's the amount of surface water that was available to the community. The groundwater recharge, those are the amounts of water we recharge those, each of those years, from our entitlements and allocations. The balance was had to meet with groundwater demand, that's the fourth column over. You can see during that period of record, we pulled out 919,000 acre feet of water, which is just under how much water Pine Flat can hold, and we left on the table, didn't use, 573,000 acre feet during that period, which is about the size of Millerton Lake. So we left the Millerton Lake quantity of water that we didn't have access to. If we had 110,000 acre feet of production in, available and producing, this is how the profile changes. We would have gone from 900,000 acre feet out of the ground down to 300,000, about 300,000 acre feet, and we would have went from leaving 573,000 acre feet on the table or in the, in the lakes, down to 57,000. The reality is, and this is where the state wants us to get, and as a community, this is where we need to get, we would have preserved groundwater, we would have preserved about 630,000 acre feet of water. We would have left it there for us to go back and get later, and that's about five years of our current demand. So it was about five years of water we could have left in the ground and come back and got on a year like this and a year like last year. That's what the intent of this Groundwater Sustainability, Groundwater Sustainability Act is, is to use your surface waters when they're available, and when they, and when they're not available, to the extent that they historically have been, you go back and you mine your groundwater and make that available to the community. This is the plan we're headed towards. The question obviously becomes, well, how reliable is that surface water? So I received data from FID on Fresno Irrigation District on the entitlements that we would have had available to us from '65 to 2013. I also got the same data from Millerton Lake, they gave me the same data on what was been available to us, and so that's what this curve is right here. These are the different, different quantities of water that would have been available to the city of Fresno. You can see there, on the far left side is the scale, it's 200,000 where it starts, that's about 200,000 acre feet. And as you can see, the fluctuations are associated with rainfall, precipitation, and snowpack. And so you can see in '77, not such a good year, and that was a year that we had a drought, and it was reflected in this map. You can see when we get to the end over here, 2013, 2014, we hit this drought we're in now, and we are, so we, it reduced the amount of water that was available. Over this period of record, we had about, the average water available to the city was 173,000 acre feet. We are proposing, as part of this plan, is to use 110,000 acre feet of that to produce surface, treated surface water for the community. We picked this number for a lot of reasons. One is, that's the number we need to kind of balance, deal with the contamination issues, deal with the quantity issues, but also kind of fits, there is some concern what climate change might do going forward, what entitlement changes might happen. And so rather than trying to build facilities to take advantage of 173,000 acre feet, we've scaled it down to about 63% of that. So that's the 110,000 acre feet, so that we always, to the extent we can, have a reliable supply of water to those facilities. And so 46 out of the last 50 years, the city would have had surplus water above that 110,000 acre feet. Now what we need to work out is just all the delivery schedules for those, but that's the water that we would have had available. So it's a very reliable system, and based on the sizing that we are proposing. So here's what that looks like, and this is a curve, again, we will submit to the state of California when they ask us, hey, how are you gonna comply with this law? Show us the math, show us the numbers. So the do-nothing curve is shown here. These are acre feet, acre, thousand acre feet loss in the groundwater aquifer underneath us. Basically, what'll occur if we do nothing, it'll continue to follow the pattern it has. If we built a 30 MGD plant only, it doesn't get us to a sustainable groundwater management system. We continue to fall, we've just basically changed the phase, we've just moved the phase over. The 80 MGD is intended to present this curve, and this is the curve we will present to the state, and this is the, the presentation we will suggest that, that indicates that 80 MGD is the right number for us to present as part of our groundwater sustainability plan. As with all regulatory negotiations, there are two things that catch you. One is, how big things need to be to comply, and how long do you get to comply? The duration period is done, the law pretty much is clear, how much time we have to, but how big we have to make the plant, that's probably still subject to discussion. We're gonna present an 80 MGD solution to the state, and we're gonna argue that that does meet the demands and the requirements of our community. We'll fit that in with the rest of the community and the regional partners, and present that as our package of the state as part of our groundwater sustainability plan. So again, talk a little bit about the rates now. So this is, this is the funding program that we have presented, and we have been working toward developing. This is the rate plan, based on 1,800 cubic feet, a one-inch service. The middle column there is what was repealed on July 31st, 2014, and the revised rate plan reflects the new loan that the State Division of Financial Assistance has made available to the city. What was, I do want to take a moment to just thank the process. The process was very good, that got us from the July 31st rescission to today. Through that process, we reevaluated the size of the water plant, we reevaluated the phasing of all of the projects, we reevaluated the financing plan, we were able to secure the, the loan from the State Division of Financial Assistance. All of those things contributed to helping us reduce these rates. One of the targets we have been looking to establish is just, the state has an index that they kind of use to target, you know, where are you relative to affordability? And it's a percent, 1.5% of median household income. Our median household income is $42,015, and based on that, affordable monthly water bill is about $52.52. And so our goal all along had been to prepare a financial plan that met that affordability index from the outset. We met it on the original plan, and this new plan even enhances our ability to, to meet that standard. So one of the things we want to talk about is that this new rate does promote conservation, it does provide benefits for those who find a way to, to drive efficiencies in their water use. Our 2013 average consumption for the single-family residential was 2,400 cubic feet, just closed the books on last year, and it was 21.7. Again, great job by the community in, in taking up the conservation theme. And in 2019, our forecasted average consumption is going, we, our rate plan is built around 16,500 cubic feet. So we believe that the community can still find a way to get another 24% additional water conservation in the community. What we wanted to emphasize was that if you look at the current rates, 2,449, that is comprised of a $13.51 meter charge, a 10.98 consumption charge, and here's how that breaks out in terms of the allocation to fixed versus variable. The meter charge is 55% of your bill, can't do anything about it. It's just, that's gonna show up every month, no matter how much you use or save, and the consumption charge is 44. Our new rate plan that we've developed has 36, 6% in the meter charge and 63.6% in the consumption charge. Again, gives people greater control of their monthly water bill, so that they can drive, they can identify opportunities to be more efficient. That'll translate into monthly water bill savings. And so here's what that would look like if we had a 20% conservation waters. Again, our plan is built on 24% conservation in this, in this customer class, but if somebody, if individual finds efficiencies to get to 20% conservation over this rate period, the rate plan goes from 2,449 up to $42.96. So it's about an $18 swing versus the $25 we were looking at. Again, we wanted to give that control back to the ratepayers, so that they can have an opportunity to identify opportunities for efficiency, and then benefit from being more efficient with water. So here are our rates compared. These are our 4,922 is the rate. That rate will be in effect for 1,800 cubic feet through June 30 of 2019. So that's that, that rate will be affecting. And as you can see, Orange Cove is right there with us today, Visalia is past us today, Stockton, Visalia, you can read the, read the cities. The city of Fresno's water is very, very, very affordable. And again, we've used that index as another measure to make sure that we were affordable with regard to the median household income in the community. One of the things that's been talked about in the community is the fact that your, your bill is gonna go up double, triple, there's been a lot of different numbers that are out there. And so what we wanted to do was just share with people that, you know, over this five-year period, the only thing that's going to change is the total water charges. You can see it's boxed out there in red there, 2,449 is the number now, and going forward, it'll be $49.22. So that's the number that will change. So your utility bill, the total utility bill, will change by about 30%. So that's the part, all the other, we are working, all the other charges will remain fixed during that period, and through, so that will be through June 30, 2019. The only numbers that we will, we will looking to change are the total water charges from 2,449 to 4,922. One of the things we had, I had a meeting with a, with a resident, he said, hey, did you ever look at the old 2011 Utility Advisory Committee recommendation? And I said, well, I didn't, but I thought I should, and he thought I should, and so I did. And so here's what that looks like, and I was kind of fascinated by this, because it was a, it was a financial plan and rate plan put together to fund basically what we're looking at doing now. And so if you look at the year one through year five of that 2011 recommendation versus the 20, what the recommendation were, we are, year one, year two, and year three, year one, we are less expensive, year two, we are less expensive, year three, we're about close, 75 cents. Year four and year five, we are, we start to separate, but we're about $6, 6% difference over that period versus what was recommended in 2011. And so I thought that was pretty fascinating, that we were able to, without trying, I can tell you, we didn't try this, but we came pretty close to matching what had been put together by the UAC back in 2011. So affordability has been a big question, and so thanks to the administration, looked hard, and our city attorney worked even harder to identify a strategy that we could bring back to the council to present as a opportunity to do a water affordability credit to help low-income residents. And so here's how that will play out. Monthly water bill cost against 2,449. What we're doing is, the monthly water bill cost for the first 12 months, again, this first 12 months will straddle two different rate increases, so that's, that's what you see reflected there, so it'll be $30.45. So the monthly water bill impact will be $5.96 over that first 12 months. Water affordability credit, $5, and so the net impact to a single-family residential customer, again, 18, is about 96 cents over that first year. So we've been really trying to do something to make sure we were addressing the affordability question and making something available to the community. We had nothing available for the, for the water utility, and so now that we do, and I want to thank the council for bringing that to our attention and, and asking us to put something together and prepare it. And I do want to thank the city attorney's office for yeoman's work in trying to help us find a, a suitable revenue stream to, to cover that cost. So here's the schedule we're working on, the Frank Kern Canal Pipeline, so July 2015, just after July 2015, we're gonna be looking to finish the design and start the construction. Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant, we will bid that here in, we will, we're, let me give you this other schedule. So here's what we're looking, here's the schedule for the next six months. So on March 5th, 2015, we're gonna bring the applications to you for the balance of the projects for, to, for state financial assistance. March 30th, that's when the bills will have the new rates that we've been talking about, that we're talking about tonight. May-June, we expect to receive the loan agreement for the pipeline projects, the draft of those, what those kind of look like, maybe. On July 15th, the low-income credit will go into effect, and that will be also the month that we advertise for bids for the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant. In October, we will award construction contract for the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant. Going out even further, October of 2018 through March of 2019, that's when we will run the 54 MGD plant and, and have the state observe that operation and confirm that it does what it says it was supposed to do. From March 2019 to May 2019, we will take one set of filters, and we will operate them at a rate equivalent to 80 million gallons a day. We will have to do that for about a year, and then in June of 2019, we'll start that 12-month process. January 20th, as Dave worth indicated, that's when the Fresno has to be managed under a groundwater sustainability plan. The 80 MGD plan is, is the foundation of our, our presentation to the state. In June 2020, we'll have completed the 80 MGD demonstration, and on July 2020, we expect to receive the permit to operate the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant at 80 million gallons a day, right in time for the summer when it's really hot and we're needing lots of water. So getting close to the end here, what have we heard since July 13, July 31st, 2014? The date of the rate rescission. What happened? There's been a lot of things going on since that day. The water affordability and equity are important. So building on that theme, and working with city attorney, city manager, and at the direction of council, we identified an affordability credit program, and we designed a rate plan that establishes that everybody pays proportional to what they use, consistent with California law. New development should pay its fair share of program costs. That Nexus study for how the development fees need to be recalculated has started. We are in the process of collecting the data, reviewing the data, and then we will be prepared to bring that back to you as a recommendation on how water capacity fee charges need to be adjusted, consistent with how the rate plan fees have been adjusted, the, the consumer rate plan fees have been adjusted. What happens if we don't advance the capital plan and the rate plan, which is one of the reasons why I had my friends here from the state water resources and the regional water quality control, they have measures and methods. There's a chapter dedicated to it on the sustainability plan, state intervention, that's what that chapter's titled. They have a plan on how they'll do that, and the regional water quality control board has a strategy. It's, it's outlined in law, the steps they will take to implement to deal with the quality issues that we have here in the city of Fresno. We have credibility issues on delivering projects, transparency. Thanks to this afternoon's action, we now have an Accountability and Oversight Committee Act, so that'll be part of this program moving forward, is bringing the citizens in, expert citizens in, to help guide and direct and be part of the process. What is the reliability of the service, city's surface water entitlements? Again, we looked at that. Again, we looked at that. 173,000 acre feet has been the average we've gotten. We're only looking to use 110,000 to produce surface water. That's been available 46 out of the last 50 years of record that we have for that. What happens if we get additional financial support from the state? Well, you know, words are better than actions. And so we demonstrated what we will do. When we get a loan package from the state, we will adjust the rates downward, just as we've done in this rate. So the next time you will see that will probably be in that September, October timeframe when we bring the package back that is being, that'll be offered for the pipeline projects that we have. Are we certain the Recharge Fresno Plan will meet the state's requirements within the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act? I am certain that with the help of my attorneys, we are going to argue to the state that we have a great plan, and this plan complies. But again, when you get into these negotiations with the state, they are going to want to talk to us about, can it be a little bigger, can it be a little more? They can't talk to us about the schedule. The schedule is set. But we have a plan in place, and I think we have the data to demonstrate that this plan will meet the requirements of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. What is the status of the conveyance agreement? So the status of the conveyance agreement, I'm going to ask Gary Serata to come up and share a few thoughts, and I'll share a few, I haven't come up now, and we will. So this conveyance agreement is vintage 1976. And if you think about what that thing has endured over that time, in those 40 years, the droughts that it's endured, the addition of a surface water treatment plant, all the new recharge basins, we're now going to have a recycled water program. We've got the Groundwater Sustainability Act to deal with. We've got the groundwater contamination issues to deal with. It has been a very, very resilient and strong and powerful agreement that has got the city, you know, pretty far down the road. But it doesn't reflect those things. And so now, as with all other things, there's just a time to get it updated and work together with our FID partner to make that happen and make it, get it adjusted appropriately so that it reflects kind of today's conditions. The challenge, and I mentioned that at the last meeting, the challenge for Gary and I will be, can he and I and our representative teams put something together that will test, you know, will, will stand the test of time and last 40 years? That would be very, very powerful if he and I can accomplish that. And I know that that's what we want to do. And so with that, I'll let Gary kind of share his thoughts.
Thank you, Thomas. Gary Serata, General Manager of the Fresno Irrigation District. I appreciate the time to come and address the council. Before I get started, and, you know, that last bullet point, what is the status of the conveyance agreement? I can tell you that the status of the conveyance agreement is that we are working towards trying to get to where we need to be. But there's going to be some challenges, and there's some big challenges in this. And so you need to understand where the conveyance agreement is at and the sorts of things that are incorporated into the conveyance agreement so that you as a council, as we move forward, understand that it's not going to be a simple thing to get this thing all done in the next week, 10 days, or even at the end of the year. I think, I think it's going to be a, a challenge to get it done by the end of the year. So I'd like to make the following comments so you understand the conveyance agreement a little bit better. And I like to, I'm making these comments so they can be put on record. Terms of the conveyance agreement. The conveyance agreement expired in 1981. We are currently working on a year-to-year agreement. It's not a long-term agreement, it's a year-to-year agreement. Incorporated within the agreement is the ability for either the city or FID to do away with the conveyance agreement. If, if the conveyance agreement goes away, water supply goes away. Water made available to the city. It's done under the Pursuit of Water Code, Section 26671 through 26677. And, and in 26674, it says this. Nothing in this chapter authorizes the sale or transfer of any water right, nor shall the agreement authorize in Section 2660, 671 to be construed or deemed to constitute the sale or transfer of water rights. The water rights will always stay with the Fresno Irrigation District. Agreement allows for the city to accept the water for the lands within the city as outlined within that section. Storage. The city of Fresno does not have storage in Pine Flat Dam. You do in your CBP contract with the Frye Water Use Authority up at Frye Dam. You do have storage there and the ability to carry over from one year to the next, but you don't have it in Pine Flat Dam. Water that is, is unutilized by the city of Fresno. I have to clarify this because we've heard it over and over again, and, and my farmer, my farmer's, my phone hasn't, hasn't stopped ringing. The water does not go down the river and is lost to this area. It does not. What the conveyance agreement allows is for that water to be captured by FID. That water is then delivered to either our growers for, for irrigation purposes that we can do groundwater recharge with it. It accomplishes two things. It does this, that if we deliver surface water to our growers, it shuts off the pumps that are adjacent and, and affect the city of Fresno's groundwater supply. And so they're not competing for the same groundwater supply. So it is a source of groundwater recharge as well. And then the, obviously, the second thing it does is that it does replenish the groundwater offer because anything that the farmer or the plant is not utilizing, that water goes down to the groundwater and it, and it continues to recharge the groundwater. Scheduling of the water. The way the conveyance agreement reads currently is that any water that's, that the city of Fresno is entitled to, that water, if you're not able to, if we schedule it and you're not able to receive it, then the water comes back to the district and we deliver it to our growers. The, the water is also required to be delivered in the same period that we're delivering water to the rest of our constituents, which essentially means we're delivering that water to the rest of our growers. So if we're delivering for two months, the way the conveyance agreement reads currently, that you'll receive water for two months. And so I bring all these things up to you because I want you to, I want you to understand what the conveyance agreement currently states. And if you don't have a copy of it, I'd be more willing to, you know, provide that copy to you. But the renegotiation of the conveyance agreement is going to be a, a process. It's not going to happen overnight. There's a number of issues that we're going to have to get through, a number of issues that we're going to have to address within the conveyance agreement. And there are some things in there that probably both of us on either side are not going to like. But as Tommy stated, the conveyance agreement that was done back in 1976 really did its job for, for the, the 40 years that it's been in place. Those, and it was in conjunction with the city, conjunction with the irrigation districts, our forefathers really put a lot of thought and effort into that conveyance agreement, and it's worked. Obviously, the conditions have changed, and as the conditions change, you know, those are the sorts of things that we're going to renegotiate in the conveyance agreement. We're obligated to be part of the Groundwater Sustainability Act. We're partnering that. We're, we're already at the table having those discussions. And so we're going to need to partner with the city of Fresno and FID to make sure that we attain those goals and, and with a number of other folks. We're already working with the county of Fresno, the Consolidated Irrigation District, FID, and the two cities, Clovis and Fresno. So there's a commitment by FID to get us there as well, too. So I, I state all these things so that you understand that the conveyance agreement is a complex agreement, and it's going to take some time to get through it. I'd be more willing to answer questions when the time comes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. So where do we want to get to? Public health and safety. Safe, reliable water system for the community. That's really what we're trying to target here. Sustainable and resilient water supply, that's now the law of the land. We have to do that with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. Equitable and affordable rate plan, and that we make sure that people pay proportionally to what they use, and that we found a way, and that we find a way to help those who might need a little assistance to get through some of these adjustments in the water plan, in the water rate plan that we have established. And with that, that concludes our presentation, and I will leave it to the council president.
Thank you, staff, for the presentation. Now we will begin to take public comment, and I'm going to go through all of the cards that I have turned in first. But don't worry, if you have not turned in a card and you would like to speak, after I have gone through all of the cards, you will be afforded an opportunity to speak. Everyone will have three minutes. And I ask, because we have so many speakers lined up and because I know I have an anxious set of colleagues ready to debate the issue, that we ask the speakers to try your very best to keep your comments in the, in the three-minute time period. I'll be, I'll be doing gentle reminders to you if you, if you do forget, but we really do want to be respectful of each other's time. So with that, our first speaker up is Al Smith. And we'll have Daniel Torres on deck to be ready, and Wayne Whitman after that.
Thank you very much, President Baines and council members. I'll be quick. We have talked about this issue on a number of occasions, so there's nothing new that I can bring to you today that you haven't already heard from the Chamber of Commerce, so I'll go back and not rehash that. I do think that what we're doing and what we have here in front of us tonight is a better thing than where we started. A lot of people came together, they brought concerns together, they modified the plan, and I think all in all, we have got a better plan here tonight. So the only thing I would say is, we know about sustainability, we know about infrastructure, we know about taking care of those who are less fortunate in our community. But this city has had a history. It's had a history of taking major projects and looking far down the road and, and trying to solve them early. Measure C, I think, is a perfect example. We bit, bit the bullet, we raised our taxes, but we needed something that was very, very important to our community, and that's a viable infrastructure. We all agree that this needs to be done. We don't know when it will be done. We all agree, I think, that if we put it off till later, it will be more expensive. This is a can, in my view, that has a lot of dents in it, and we have kicked this can for so long, and it's time to quit kicking it. I hope you'll pass it. Thank you.
Daniel Torres. And after that, we will have Wayne Whitman.
Thank you, council president, council members. And I've been living here in the city of Fresno now for better half of six years, and since being here in Fresno has a water problem that must be solved now. Many of our wells are old and in danger of contamination and collapse. Our groundwater levels are dropping and fast, and now the, the state of California has placed new restrictions on overcharging groundwater. That place, that places us in our current water situation in jeopardy. The city of Fresno is paying $3.5 million a year for access to mountain water, but we cannot use that water because there is no infrastructure to capture and treat that water. This plan will repair the pipelines and build a water system that will supply Fresno with clean, safe, reliable water for our children and our grandchildren. So I stand before you tonight to please vote yes on this plan tonight.
Wayne Whitman. And next we have Tom Thiessen.
I don't, again, I don't have any prepared comments. I just wanted to come up here. I was at the last meeting, and I spoke to you all about people such as myself that are on fixed incomes and how important it is that you take us into consideration. I just want to say publicly, thank you for doing that. I seen the plan tonight, and I just wanted to say, you know, thank you publicly, and, and thank you to everyone. There's a lot of smart people that have put this thing together, and there's been a lot of hard work, I could see. I wish I'd have been a little more involved a little sooner so I'd know more about it. But just from the last couple of meetings, I see that there's been a lot of thought put into this, and I just want to say thank you. I know it's not always easy being in leadership. I've led some smaller ministries and stuff, but it's, you know, there's people on both sides that, that don't always agree. And I just want to thank you for your commitment to this community and for the people of Fresno. I know there's a lot of community leaders here tonight, people that lead in all different areas, and they may not agree with everything that's going on and stuff, but I think it's great that they're here. And I just, I just wish we had more people in the community to get involved in these things. But I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to, for putting this all together. You've done a great job of presenting it, and thank you for, all of you for taking us into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Tim Thiessen.
Good evening, council members and staff. For those of you that know me, I will be brief for a change tonight. I represent Fresno taxpayers, and we've weighed in on this issue many of the forums. I appreciate that opportunity. And just to really recap, you know, we need to, the capturing this available surface water is extremely important, and we must address this water contamination. My ag background and other areas we work in, Fresno taxpayers is not concentric only to Fresno or Fresno County. We are involved in taxpayer-type issues statewide. And fixing our infrastructure, 20 years of procrastination has brought us to where we're at today. As was mentioned earlier, the can has too many dents in it, and through seepage and breakage and everything else. And when the state, if the state would ever make a move on you also, from past involvements is when you have poor infrastructure, your seepage and leakage and all that does not count towards recharge. It's counted as waste if the state comes in and starts to move on you on a water pan, plan. So extremely important. And in conclusion, you know, the rate impacts in the short term will be far outweighed by the long-term benefits to our community. And the, as the saying goes, the status quo is the arch enemy of progress, and we're urging a yes vote on the water plan. Thank you for your time.
Bill Simon. Then we will have Gene Hayes.
Many times over the last several years, I have come to the city council to tell you what to do. You haven't seen me in several months because I declared myself retired when I realized I couldn't see very well anymore, couldn't breathe very well anymore, and can't walk very far anymore. But tonight, there is one thing I can clearly see, and one last thing I need to tell you to do, and that is to pass this water rate plan. If you don't, in the near future, all of us, rich and poor, will suffer. We have had rights to water that we weren't able to treat. In the presentation, I said, no, it didn't just go down the river. Sounded to me like it went down the river so that somebody else could use our water. If we don't pass this water rate plan, and our aging infrastructure all gives in at the same time, it will be a huge expense, much worse than if we do it in a planned, met way. We have to replenish the groundwater. The plan does not address the use of gray water, and I wish it did. Maybe we'll get back to that in the future. But it is important to pass this water rate plan, and if you do, I will retire in peace. Thank you.
And afterward, we will have Jay Hubbell.
Good evening, city council and esteemed colleagues. My name is Gene Hayes. I'm a resident of the city of Fresno, and this is my second time I've come to comment on the proposed surface water treatment plant. I'm extremely disheartened that in all the comments I've heard and in all the pieces I've read in the Fresno Bee, with the exception of one. I've read in the Fresno Bee, with the exception of one, there's hardly any mention whatsoever of the fact that, one, we live in a semi-desert, and, two, many scientists say we are just in the beginnings of a mega drought. If we build this new surface water treatment plant, we are not guaranteed that the water will come. One researcher, Scott Stein, says, "We continue to run California as if the longest drought we're ever going to have is about seven years." California in 2013 received less rain than in any other year since it became a state in 1850. We need to conserve. Now, that's not the magic bullet, but first and foremost, we need to conserve. Fresno Bee did a wonderful thing last August, telling us in detail how we could conserve thousands of gallons of water if we just did the things it said. That was a wonderful article. Also, the cities of Turlock and cities in Contra Costa County have extensive suggestions on their websites that are very user-friendly. I haven't seen any in the website of the city that are user-friendly, but this magically appeared tonight. It's a start. I read the fantastic piece by Councilwoman Soraya this morning. She has done her homework. Her mention of the T3 plant at Dakota and Armstrong and Dakota and the northeast water treatment plant sat partially idle for years. Strangely, the T3 plans went online in 2013, only reached full operational capacity a few weeks ago. Was that a coincidence? What are you thinking when you propose this $429 million project? Were you thinking of privatizing our water eventually? What other surprises are in store for us? Conservation is the answer first and foremost. Planning as if the drought will indeed last for 20 to 50 years. Don't think the water from wherever you get it will magically appear. And by the way, don't forget that agriculture uses 80% of our water anyway. Maybe they should be included in the talks. I urge you to vote no on this proposal.
Jay Hubbell. And after Jay, we'll have Gladys Denise.
I would urge the council to vote no on this, because there is a problem within the city of Fresno that we build things and saying they will come. We're building an infrastructure that does not take into account a conveyance agreement that needs to be renegotiated. I would ask the council to postpone this until we have that conveyance agreement in hand, and then proceed from there, because everything is really predicated on an assumption of 180,000 acre-feet from the Kings River, which may or may not be there. So this is building a house on quicksand. I ask you to vote no.
Gladys Denise. And then next, we will have Joan Pos.
Council President, council members, staff, thank you so much. I'm here to say just thank you. I reiterate those comments that are appreciative of all the work that has been poured into this. As a member of the 2011 Utility Advisory Committee, I know how much work it is for our city staff, for all of the utility department members, for our state resource members, for the FID. I want to say a special thank you for continuing to support our city and to work even without this conveyance agreement fully vetted. They know, and they are stepping up, and they are cooperating with the city. This is a wonderful win-win. We couldn't ask for a better irrigation district to work with. Fresno Irrigation District is going to supply what is needed with their resources, with their personnel, to unify, to make this entire region water sustainable. And I just want to thank you. I just want to really sincerely say how much I trust our city council, our staff, the mayor. Everyone has done an extremely thorough job. I want to thank all of those who were invested in getting extra resources to help those who are least able to pay for these additional water costs, but as the facts have been stated, there is no other option. We are in a situation where we have to have the surface water treatments come online. We have to have a plan to build a sustainable future. Everyone is working together. We just saw the facts. We saw that the other surrounding cities are already paying what we are only going to be paying five years from now. This is an incredible amount of work the city does to bring water to our homes, to our farms. It is just amazing to me. We owe a debt of gratitude to everyone who's been working on this, and I just want to thank the city councils. Thank you very much.
Joan Pos. Then after that, we will have J.D. McCubbin.
This is my second visit to the council about the water issue, and I can still hear, and I'm not blind yet, as Mr. Simon speaks, but I am retired, except I don't feel retired, because I feel in this community, even those of us who are retired, have to work full-time in order to keep our city government transparent. I do not feel that our city government is transparent. I'm probably dating myself by wondering if all of you remember the Three Monkeys. One, do not see, hear, or speak, and I think, I do not see the water that you're talking about. I do not hear the streams. I don't hear the river running, and I think you speak without talking about the top 10 U.S. cities that are running out of water in America. These are the cities in the San Joaquin Valley. Fresno is number 10. Visalia is number 9. Madera is 8. Merced is 6. Hanford is 2, and Bakersfield is 1. That means that this whole valley is in a dire drought. And one of the reasons that it is, and this is another thing that is never spoken of, or rarely spoken of, is that 80% of the water goes to agriculture. Of course, we need food to eat, but what has happened in our valley is that many of our farmers have changed to export crops, almonds, pistachios. They've gone to China and Asia. And one of the things that's really remarkable to me is that the California almond exports take annual water that could provide water for L.A. homes and business for three years. Just think of it. And right now, in our valley, there are millions of gallons of water used for brand-new almond orchards. What's going to have to happen in this valley is we are going to have to change our whole way of being, and one of them is that the 1% agriculture industry ought not to get all of the water, especially when they're making a killing on exports. This water, right now, belongs to us in our valley, not to people making money for exports. And at present, the majority of city water is drawn from the underground aquifer, which you all know. Water conservation is a must to secure immediately a significant reduction in groundwater overdraft. It has taken five to seven years for Fresno to reduce urban consumption, and it's way behind others.
Thank you. Jay McCubbin. Next, we will have Mary Murphy.
Thanks very much. I'm back again. I'm going to try and get through five points in three minutes. Let's be open about what's really going on.
Step closer to the mic.
Pardon me?
Step a little closer to the mic.
Okay. We're trying to preserve open local control, which I think is a great idea, so I support that. I'd rather, I think we're better off dealing with City Hall than the state Capitol. If City Hall's bad, the Capitol's a lot worse. The rates are to finance this plan, and though we've had lots and lots of detail about the plan, what's missing in the plan is, even in the budget, we don't talk about about 70,000 acre-feet that fall as rainfall on the service area, so where's that in this plan? And we don't talk about recycling and reuse. So for a comprehensive plan at this stage, we should have those elements in it, but I thought tonight we're supposed to talk about water rates and not the entire plan. I was lucky to be on the second of the rate committees, the utility committee, so I had a lot of consultants teach me a lot about water rates, but they didn't ever answer the question, why you go to flat rates, which is what we have. Why can't we go to stepped rates? Why can't we go to exponential step rates? Why can't we go to even logarithmic stepped rates? So the rates that you suggested, thank you, Mr. Tommy, is, we're getting away from most of the bill being on meter rent, and we're going down to the meter rents only a third, and consumptive use is two-thirds. That's a good improvement. I like that. But I don't believe that consumption is price-sensitive under this set schedule of increased rates. When I was on the committee, we wanted to get up to about $3 a gallon, or $3 a billing unit, rather than $1.75. I think water's too cheap in Fresno, and I'd be up for lots more, but I think it's premature to decide this at this time tonight, because you need another year of data off your meters to really fine-tune your rates, so that's a reason to delay it. And you should have presented to you an analysis of step-rate billing and the proper rates that will maintain the cash flow to run the department, but will encourage conservation use, because these rates, we have such an inelastic demand for water, that these rates will not in themselves drive down use. You should include conservation, you should include stormwater, and you should include reuse.
Thank you.
I think I got through it.
All right. Mary Murphy.
So I ask you to delay the decision till you get that information.
Thank you. Mary Murphy. And then after Mary Murphy, we will have Gregory Barbarian.
Looks like we're in for a long evening, huh? I've been an organic gardener for several years, and I have felt the water table depleting over those years. I listen to your quandaries, and I don't think that we have a clear definition of the problem. The problem is multifaceted. The problem includes, yes, perhaps satisfying legislative requirements that may not be kicking in until 2017, 18 with the Groundwater Management Act, maybe sooner, I'm not clear, with the TCP issues. We do have aging infrastructure, but not just at the city level, we have it at the state level and the federal level as well. The state and federal systems were designed for a 19 million population in California, and we're at 38 million and climbing. We're trying to look like England in a semi-arid desert. Our climate, our population, and our lifestyles are not suited to one another. So what, that 46 out of the last 50 years, you could get that 110,000 acre-feet of water? If you look, what if we're past the tipping point? We're in the worst drought we've ever been in, and it's not just California. Have you seen pictures of Lake Mead lately, that supplies water to Los Angeles? Do you understand what's going to happen with renegotiations with those seven states that rely on Lake Mead? And they're all part of the same problem that we're part of, called drought and climate Fresno needs a consistent vision for water conservation. For example, it doesn't have one. New lawns can get a 30-day waiver for watering so that they get seeded. We shouldn't even be having lawns. We have a lot, there are a lot of things that can be done to solve the problem. Consistent water conservation plan and program that targets homes, institutions, and the city itself, based on radical shifts in learning to live within environmental constraints and climate change. Get rid of the insularity of all the entities which are defining the problem, and work collaboratively. Look at examples elsewhere. The American Council for an Energy-Efficient Economy and the Alliance for Water Efficiency can provide you with examples of things that you can do.
Thank you.
And specifically, look at the city of Colorado and the Massachusetts Water Authority that saved lots of money every year, both for themselves and for their residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Gregory Barbarian and Dan Winton, and I'm going to remind folks to really stay as close to the three-minute time as possible. Thank you.
Hello and good evening. I want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Greg Barbarian. I'm currently a Fresno Irrigation District Board Member, serving Division 5, and tonight I want to state my personal views, and they're not reflective of the Irrigation Board, but these are my personal views regarding this subject. I want to start out and thank all the council members who have studied this issue. It's extremely complex, especially Councilmember Soraya, whose editorial was very informative that was in the Fresno Bee the other day. I agree with a number of her statements, including the fact that the city and the Fresno Irrigation District are currently engaged in the process of negotiating a new conveyance agreement. This is the framework that allows water to be moved into the city. I've received calls from growers who have legitimate concerns about this surface water treatment plant. These concerns and others need to be discussed and addressed within the new agreement. Gary Serrato brought some of this up. Hopefully, he'll be able to, he's the general manager of Fresno Irrigation. Hopefully, he'll be able to come up again and speak in more detail about this conveyance agreement. It is my belief that a vote tonight is premature. At best, it should be delayed until the FID Board approves an agreement that balances the needs of the city with its growers. Thank you.
Don Winton and Diane Merrill. Don Winton?
Honorable counsel, on February 14th, at their request, I met with Mayor Swerge and Tommy Esquera, with Doug Vagum present at my request. Contrary to what the mayor is spreading, the only consensus we came to was information sharing by the city, which to date has not been forthcoming. Other than that, we pretty much agree to disagree. I keep hearing about this one-way leak-proof bowl underneath the city of Fresno. Maybe you guys can ask the mayor and Tommy Esquera where its boundaries are. They either couldn't or wouldn't answer me. This sounds like the making of a new playoff football game. We could call it the BS Bowl. You should have a copy of the EPA map. Then there's a 2010 DPU report recommending 9% increase for five years for water repair improvements. Tommy finally mentioned this. At the time we had the meeting, he didn't even know it existed. Then we have the mystery math. 1.86 divided by 0.61 equals 100% increase, or with the possibility of a state loan, a 60% increase. I actually did the math on a duplex that I own. Even with the state loan, it came out to be a $37 per month mean increase per unit. For the single mother of three, this amounts to $444 per year, which represents almost 3% of her total. 3% of her total family budget, as compared to maybe one-half of 1% for all of you, Tommy Esquera, and Mayor Swearegen. Hardly seems fair, does it? Then we have the protest fiasco. Lee Brand said, if this was an election and you win 70, 30%, that would be a blowout. Of course, what he didn't say, that in a real election, you wouldn't start out with 100% of the vote in your favor. Mayor Swearegen said, a vast majority supported. No, mayor, a vast majority simply didn't vote. And someone, I think it was Oliver Bain, said, it's good to see that the democratic process works. What should have been said was, it's good to see that the mockery, a mockery of the democratic process works for us. The truth is that almost 51,000 households submitted protest ballots. At two adults per household, that's 100,000 potential voters. Almost 25,000 more than ever voted in a general election, and 60,000 more than voted for Mayor Swearegen in 2012. All done by social networking at no cost to the taxpayers. So, Lee Brand, you're right. In a real election, it would have been a blowout, just with a different outcome. If you're so positive it would have been a blowout, why don't you put your money where your mouth is and make a motion to put this issue to a real ballot? I live in a county island and wouldn't be able to vote, but I'm confident that city residents would make the right decision. Aren't you? One recurrent argument and fear tactic is if we don't do something, the state will. At least, maybe that wouldn't be a local Band-Aid for a statewide problem. I don't think in the long run, it's really going to make any difference how you all vote tonight. I hope you can all remember 3,850. Total number of signatures required to put this back to square one, with six months to do it. You may, however, guarantee two things: the largest voter registration drive and the highest voter turnout in the next election.
Thank you. Thank you. Diane Merrill is next.
How come I can't get as much time as Tommy Esquera?
You can't, I'm sorry. Diane Merrill is next. And then Gary Sorato.
My name is Diane Merrill. I reside on Colfax Avenue in the city of Fresno, and I'm a board member of the League of Women Voters of Fresno and a member of the League's Natural Resources Committee. And I'm going to deliver comments on behalf of the League. We support the Recharge Fresno Plan to upgrade the city of Fresno's water infrastructure because we can no longer afford to delay the construction of the necessary improvements to address current water quality and groundwater overdraft problems and to secure a more reliable water supply into the future. As we have heard from Mr. Esquera and the experts who spoke, this water infrastructure project is needed if the city is to comply with California water quality and groundwater management laws and regulations, particularly the Sustainable Groundwater Act, Management Act, and the impending water quality standards for 123 TPC, TCP, excuse me. And we also appreciate that the plan contains $82.5 million for taking care of our aging infrastructure and, you know, fixing leaks, repairing or replacing pipes and all of that kind of thing that's needed to maintain our system reliability and prevent costly failures. And one aspect of the water system that hasn't been discussed, I think, is fire protection. I mean, we really need a reliable water system to provide that safety benefit for our community that is essential to us. It's important to note that the city has put policies in place through the Enterprise Accountability and Oversight Act to enhance construction and fiscal management so that large construction projects like this are completed on time, on budget, and that they deliver the benefits that are expected for the ratepayers. And we acknowledge the city's efforts to encourage water conservation by adjusting the rate plan, the proposed rate plan, and the programs that the city has in place to encourage conservation. And finally, we appreciate the development of the Water Affordability Credit for low-income residents of single-family homes and the fact that the city has really sought out state funding to help keep this project affordable. Thank you very much.
Mary Sorato. Diane Smith. And Robert Merrill after that.
My name is Diane Smith, and I live in southwest Fresno, and I'm a member of HEAT. There's several things that I'd like to discuss. One of them is the Water Affordability Credit. $5 to me is nothing. For people that are on low income, $5 off their water bill is not going to be much of anything. You can't even hardly buy a hamburger for that. So there's got to be a better system set up for them. In regards to the reconveyance, it's my understanding that a large portion of southwest Fresno is not entitled to water out of the King's River. I addressed that issue with someone, and what they told me was, we are getting most of our water from the ground. Well, I got a problem with that because now we have all these farmers who are planting these almond orchards and putting in new wells that some people that live in the area can't afford. So they're putting them in, they're drilling, they're taking all the water, and I don't see any result coming from that. I have a difficult problem with paying for something that I have no use for or that I can't use, like the King's River water. And it's, a number of people have said it before. It's like, if you plant it, it will grow. If you build it, they will come. We've seen that over and over again where that didn't happen. The only thing that I can say is, yes, things need to be done. Things should have been done a long time ago. But you cannot break the back of your citizens to correct the problem that our city leaders over the years have continued to play on. My suggestion to you is this: give some more thought to what you want to do. I know that there's been a lot of looking over this thing and a lot of different things said and a lot of plans made, and thus far, nothing seems to work for me. If I can't get any water out of the King's River, then I don't expect to have to pay for it. And I think that's only fair. So if we're losing water to the farmers who have been allowed to plant out there where I live in southwest, then they need to take up the slack and pay more for their water because they're not getting it out of the irrigation canals, which they said they were going to do in the very beginning. They're being allowed to dig more wells, and they're taking more water out than what they were doing before. So that's all I have to say. You guys need to do your job and do it right.
Robert Merrill. And then we will have Nancy Waitlow.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Robert Merrill. I'm a retired geology professor from the university, and I live in Council District Six. As a geologist with knowledge about Fresno's underground aquifer and the limits to our finite water supply, I support the proposed water infrastructure project as necessary and long overdue. We must act now to protect our groundwater for the current generation and for the future. The current overdraft is not sustainable, and we must act to clean up those parts of the aquifer where the water has become contaminated. The proposal before you will use Fresno's surface water allocation to replace much of the current overdraft over a period of many years. Though that surface water allocation may vary with the climate, especially in drought years, the surface water available will allow the city to reduce groundwater pumping and to shut off those contaminated wells. These actions, combined with increased water recharge basins adding to the groundwater, will allow our aquifer to recover over those years. The city's water surface allocation is like wages, which replenish our checking account, while our groundwater is the savings account to be used in emergencies such as the future droughts that we will see with climate change. Fresno's groundwater savings account is not unlimited, it is finite, and we have been excessively overdrawing that account for many years. My knowledge of past climate change, especially drought, suggests that the water infrastructure project is necessary to address those coming impacts from climate change. Postponing a decision favoring this project will only make the future corrections of past mistakes more expensive, as well as constraints of per capita consumption more severe. If changes are to be made, my suggestion is to limit them to putting few more dollars into addressing conservation and eventually to tiered rates. We must charge more for those that overconsume. Nobody likes raising taxes or rates, but those are the choices we must make for the government services we receive. There is no free lunch. There is no unlimited clean water supply. Recall further that Fresno's economic base is agriculture, as you've heard, which also requires water. An urban sprawl, along with population growth, is in competition with us for that finite water supply. I attended all four of the water forums, so I listened, and I listened to the fourth one. Whether or not this encourages development may be debatable, but the proper place to address that issue is in the city's general plan. Therefore, my suggestion is for the city to substantially increase development fees to pay for the additional costs that sprawl induces.
Thank you.
And when developers come before you, ask them where the water is and what they plan to reimburse the city for past infrastructure expenses.
Thank you. Thanks, Robert. Nancy Waitlow. And then Jerry Bill.
Good evening. Here we are again. And I was so happy with my new council representative. Not, I'm not in her district, I'm sorry. He's not here. Anyway, that was a beautiful piece that you wrote about this problem, and I hope that your colleagues will read it carefully because it seems like it really shows what needs to be looked at. Okay, now I'm going to go to my specialty, which is conservation. I don't see how we get new water if there isn't any. So we have to save and reuse, recycle, do everything we can with the water we actually have. And the drought might last, you know, forever from now on. So we're going to build treatment plants with lots of money, and it's not going to get us any more water if the drought continues, and it very well could. That's what I think. And let's see if I have anything else that I'm supposed to be saying here. The gray water thing, you know, there's this little thing that says, what you heard in the Four Sessions Plus and the gray water. The conservation is almost not even mentioned, and it's just the most important thing there is. So again, I'm going to ask you also to delay this vote until you have really got it down. This is too important to do because you're tired of hearing about it. You know, I would, I would want to say, let's vote on it now and get this over with. This has been too much. You've had to hear the same thing over and over again, even more than we have. And say the same thing, we've been saying the same thing over again. And you get only three minutes from each of us. And again, the last time we were here, I said how proud I was of the people who get up here and really know what they're talking about. You know, I just know that we have to conserve if we're going to have this water. We have to make it affordable for people who otherwise can't afford it. We can't just give it away to people just because they have money, they get to have lawns and, you know, all that. And 25 seconds.
Jerry Bill. And then Steve Waite.
Well, good evening. I'm generally a very strong supporter of infrastructure projects, provided that they're the right infrastructure projects and provided that they're paid for in the right way. And I think the plan you have before you, unfortunately, is the wrong infrastructure for a very real problem, but it's the wrong infrastructure, and it's being paid for in the wrong way. And let me explain what I mean. What should we be doing instead? Some speakers have already mentioned that this snow supply in the Sierra is going to be very unreliable in future years, projected to be 20% of average this year, and quite possibly going to be in that range for many, many years into the future. Maybe 10, 20, 30 years into the future, we're going to be looking at well below average snow pack. Now, of course, that will vary from year to year, but this plan doesn't take that into account. You're building a water treatment plant to use that runoff from the mountains that might not be there, and would be looking at a plant sitting idle because you don't have a supply for it. What should you be doing instead in terms of infrastructure? Well, reclaimed water. Reclaimed water is the wave of the future. That's what you should be looking at. Eventually, most places in California are going to have to be doing that. There isn't going to be new water for us. We're going to have to reuse the same water we're already using and use it over and over and over again in various forms. So we need to recycle water, we need gray water, we need rainwater catchment, all of those kinds of things. I see virtually none of that in this plan. When it shows the sources of water for the future in this plan, it doesn't mention reclaimed water or gray water, any of those things. Those things are left out of this plan. Now, as to how to pay for it, the people, there's a mention in the, in the plan here about these rates are equitable. Well, Tommy Esquera is defining the word equity in a way that is convenient for his purposes, but there's many ways, there are many ways to look at what would be equitable. The reason we have to build such large infrastructure is because of the people who are overusing water. We have to build large infrastructure to take care of urban sprawl and large areas of landscaping and people with large lawns and so on. And also to pay for new development or to provide water for new development. That's why we need this huge infrastructure that is being proposed. Well, if that's the case, then let's have it paid for by much higher development fees for the new development and by much higher rates for those who overuse their water because of, you know, over landscaping and all of those things. So a tiered water rate, if we have to wait a year to institute tiered water rates to get that study done, then that's a reason for delaying. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Waite. And then Dave Herb.
Evening, council. Steve Waite, 9,400 block of Garden Avenue. I stood here about 18 months ago and told you that we would beat you using the state constitution and constitutionally limited principles before you spent a half a million dollars suing Doug, Diane, and myself. Now I get my three minutes to speak. It's never been our contention that we didn't need surface water or infrastructure upgrades, but we don't need another surface water treatment plant that doesn't give the city one more drop of water or one more gallon of water storage. Instead, this acts as a solution to a government-caused problem, a government that is intent on keeping the needs of a non-indigenous fish and a salmon run that will never return ahead of the citizens of the city of Fresno and agricultural community of the valley. We have a surface water treatment plant in northeast Fresno that cannot run to capacity due to design issues. We also have a plant constructed at Armstrong in Dakota that sits idle due to poor planning. And now the city leaders are suggesting that we spend $429 million on a new plan that will solve our future needs, ignoring the elephant in the room. Anything government touches, it becomes more expensive, regulatory, and incompetent. We really need to look no further than last two water plants, the Metropolitan Museum, Granite Park, and the downtown baseball stadium, to see that the city, Fresno City Council has no problem passing on their mistakes to the taxpayers of the city of Fresno. You guys presented a curve up here that shows an aquifer that is going to be replenished. But as long as the West Side farmers are cut off from their water for the Delta smelt and the river run for a salmon that's never going to return, that aquifer is never going to recharge. It is going to get continually depleted because we are not sitting on a monolithic lake. It is a river, and it flows to the west. Thank you.
Dave Herb. And then Doug Vagum.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Dave Herb, long-term resident of the downtown portion of Councilman Quintero's district and a neighborhood advocate. I'm here this evening, in some ways, to make a confession. When this issue... When this issue first surfaced many months ago, I was one of the people who signed Mr. Wegum's petition. I did this, I suppose, for two reasons. One, the petition was being carried by a friend and neighbor, and I was aware of the, what I'll call populist rhetoric that accompanied the issue at the time, and I thought it was enough to raise some red flags and take a closer look at the issue. The council has responded very constructively and very professionally to those red flags, and I'm here tonight to tell you that after having attended each and every one of the public forums that the city organized throughout the community, my questions have been answered. And I'm also here tonight to encourage you to move forward with this plan. I consider ourselves to be very fortunate to have such a straightforward solution to such a critical and complicated issue. I encourage you to not delay, to move forward and to ensure the long-term health of our citizens and our economy, which this plan will do. Thank you.
Doug Wegum. Jonathan Sowickel is afterward, if I said that correctly.
Mr. President, Doug Wegum, members of the council, city of Fresno resident. Let me just say an overview of, we've come a long ways from the time that we started here in June 2013, and we've moved the ball all over the field, and we've scored some points about the ability to get the Conservation Act, the Affordability Act, the Accountability Act, the conservation credits. So you guys moved a lot. I'm thinking that we probably, if we didn't bring this to the attention of everyone in 2013, none of that would have happened. So we've done something. I want to encourage you, though, to please put this new noticing procedure in an ordinance form. Right now, it's in a settlement form. Only you folks can put it in an ordinance so it lasts until another council wants to redo it and take it away. They have that privilege, but it'll go away in 10 years unless the settlement by itself will go away in 10 years. You can put it in ordinance and put it in perpetuity, and I'd like you to do that and recommend you to do that because I think it worked. I mean, we got 50,000 households that returned and filtered out to down to 40,000. I'm proud of that. I think you folks should be proud of that. The fact that we have a plant that we disagree with, that shouldn't be up first because you have all the building costs already embedded in that plant, a chemical treatment plant, the reverse osmosis, all were built in Plant One, so you can build Plant Two as a fraction of the cost. You've got a pipeline already just opened, a 36-inch pipeline, which by the way is the size of the pipeline that flooded UCLA, 75,000 gallons a minute. So you could move a lot of water through that plant, and Mr. Isquera showed that line coming all the way down to be able to relieve those wells. It can do that, but that's a technical issue that has to be for another day. I would like, I got, Soraya and I got commented on by the city council or the city's website, but I haven't heard anything about a response for the board of supervisor letter anywhere. This is a public document. It's a public request from another body, and I hope you guys can publicly respond to it. And if it's out there and I haven't seen it, I'm sorry, but I haven't seen it. So, look, there's a lot of issues on the table here. I'm urging you to cut the ordinances and the conveyance agreements that were stressed by Gary Sorato and the other board member, and the board member from FID are very important because if you pass this plan and then you depend on their conveyance agreement contracts to deliver you the water, you'll be representing the citizens of this community in a very weak way because you passed something and you have to have it. Then you will be putting the weight on their shoulders to say, "Well, if you got to have it, here's what you're going to pay." Why not wait to see when that place, that thing is in place, and then you'll be able to be speaking from strength, not from weakness. You're representing the people from strength, and I hope you continue to do that. Thank you very much.
Jonathan Sowickel. And Rebecca Van Stockham.
Thank you very much for the time to speak here today. I too am a resident of Fresno on a fixed income, and I'm trying to be as frugal as most, just so I can cover my expenses. But I have a couple of concerns with this plan as I've heard it. I attended three out of four of the water forums, and thank you to Councilmember Brandau who discussed a lot of these things with us. I think I know a little bit about it. My concern is that in order to make this more affordable, a lot of the things that should be done have been eliminated to try to cut down on the expenses. And as someone who at one point in my career started and ran a factory, one thing I discovered is that cheaping out, saving money on things is the most expensive thing in the world because now you've got a lot of things that you've got that don't run as well as they should, and a lot of things that you've got to replace in addition to the lost production time. So when I've heard people talking, you know, folks talking about the fact that the northeast, excuse me, the southeast plant was originally supposed to be one size, and then it was reduced so that you could make it, you know, more production later, that's just going to cost more money down the road. I've heard a lot of people talk about, "Oh, let's postpone this and discuss this and discuss that." And yet, from all the things that I've heard, this has been postponed for 20 or 30 years. And there's only a limit to how long this can be postponed. Every year that it's postponed, from what I understand, it costs another $8 million in increased costs that just makes things more expensive down the road. Some things that I've heard, you know, talking about conservation, I don't know how many years it's been since we've had low-flow showerheads and low-flow toilets and people doing all sorts of things to reduce water consumption. So even though there's a lot more that can be done, there's a lot, you know, we're limited to a certain extent. One thing that I've heard from several people is that 80% of our water is used by farming. Well, everybody knows that farming uses a lot of water, but how much water is being used for environmental purposes, for the delta smelt and water running down the river for the salmon, which are not there, and other things like that? So that 80% number is not quite true. Thank you very much.
Rebecca Van Stockham. And Lauren Harding.
Hi, 4235 North Thorne. First of all, I just want to highlight or say thank you to city of Fresno staff. I had a chance to do some research in which I interviewed staff, and they were incredible. They blew me away. So there's staff people here that could write a textbook about geographical information systems, the same ones that are used to assess these sorts of projects. There's a guy here that wrote an interface for management of systems. Incredible. So wanted to start off with that. About the water rate plan, though I'm sad that there are not tiered rates that are included, and this plan doesn't have everything that everyone would want, but I'd like to just make two points. One is that sometimes I think, as important as our man-made systems are, sometimes they keep us from thinking about the nature that's right under us. And then second, I want to suggest that a water rate is really sort of communication about value between citizens, between participants in a public setting, right? So as we all know, Fresno has exceptional environmental conditions in many ways, and especially in terms of water. Its aquifer is, it's basically an alluvial fan that's made out of small pebbles and things that support it, so that, not like a river, I'll take issue with that, an aquifer that has limits, resilient in some ways, but it reaches a point where it won't come back, right? The Kings and the San Joaquin rivers, both in quantity and quality, are exceptional sources of water. And for these reasons, Fresno has been able to keep its prices low for years. But water management and the whole state is changing, and it's changing towards sustainability, now defined in a way that is pretty clear. So in my last minute here, I'd like to just say that communication about conservation has to do with water rates. The way we communicate about value in our culture is through water rates, or value of water, because we assess the price, we assess how much it means to us. And studies have shown that conservation, the biggest impact on conservation comes from an adequate rate that reflects both maintenance and supply. So I think staff and the mayor and the city council have done the work that it has taken to care for the natural systems that are irreplaceable, and I think you guys have made that possible, and I hope you'll vote yes.
Thank you. Lauren Harding, and then Howard Watkins.
Yeah, I'm Lauren Harding from northwest Fresno. I hear a lot about, "We look back 30 years." The mayor said that on TV. Saw it today at the noon news. "Oh, we look back 30, 40 years. We see all this water. That's good, average water. We'll have plenty of water." Well, I've sent you ad infinitum now, four important studies that have come out recently by climate experts, towering experts, saying we're going to have less water coming out of the Sierra. Noah Diffenbaugh in 2012, less snowpack. Los Alamos National Lab, they came out with a study about a month ago confirming that, less snowpack. And most scary, NASA put out a report called mega droughts. NASA, if you Google NASA mega droughts, they're saying we're in now for droughts lasting 20, 30, 40 years. We haven't seen that since the year 1100 or 1300. But that's what we're in for, from North Dakota to Texas, Arizona, New Mexico, Arizona, and into California, and their map shows the central San Joaquin Valley involved in mega droughts lasting up to 40 years. Today, KCBS reported that Lawrence Livermore National Lab is saying today, they're going to put it in the journal Nature, they've proven in the field that CO2 leads to climate change. This has been a lab study up to now, but now they've proven in the field that human-caused greenhouse gas emissions is responsible for climate change. So there's four reports. So looking back 30 years, you're looking in the rearview mirror. You should be looking forward. Mr. Isquera says 173 KAS available on average in the past. We'll use 110. Well, this year, we got what, 60 from Fryant, zero from Millerton Lake, and 60 out of Fryant. So we're now in the fourth year of a severe drought. 93% of California is in a severe drought now. I've told you my six-step plan. We're not saying do nothing. We're saying double the northeast plant, replace leaking water mains, build 200 acres of ponding basins, cut landscape watering from 12 hours a week, adopt a low-growth policy on population, and enter into regional water budgets. If you do that, you see, we have a plan, and it'll cost one-half of the mayor's plan. Now, all I heard about up at Stanford in October, for four days of my reunion was climate change. Unfortunately, the mayor wasn't there because she didn't go to Stanford. I wish she had because that campus is just embroiled in the topic of climate change. Leading experts there, that's all I heard about. Okay, thank you very much.
Howard Watkins, and we will have Carol Mall.
Howard Watkins, longtime resident of Fresno. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Wegum for his op-ed, Councilmember Soraya for her, and the mayor and administrations for the responses to Doug's op-ed. Also want to thank members of the council that responded and provided me additional information and answered a lot of my questions. Being here tonight, taking photos, but seeing the presentation, a few more questions have come up for me, which I'm hoping Mr. Isquera or other members of staff can answer before you take a vote. On the five-year rate, does it level off at five years, or what happens at six to 10 years? If it's going to go up more, or could the rates be spread out over a longer period of time so it's not as big an impact at five years? A major concern with the FID is the city have any right to water, or is it just the good graces of FID? I do not know. I would assume the farmers have priority, and when you have reduced water availability, FID may want to give the city access to water, but may not be legally able to do that. I don't know, but I think that should be addressed. And from reading the chart that was handed out, it looks like this past year, the city accessed 70,000 acre feet approximately of surface water. I realize the goal over the last many years is much higher, and the expectation is to reduce it down to 110,000, but if it's 70,000, that may be the best year for the next 20 years. Climate change is a reality. The drought's a reality, and it comes from climate change. If it's around 70,000, and that's the reality, if FID is not required to provide water to the city, what's the plan then? And I'm hoping these could be answered tonight. My concern is, if it's approved now, is that it only takes, what, 4,000 people to put this to an election, spending another million dollars and going through a lot of rigmarole. The more questions that get answered before you vote at this approval, because it's clear we need to do something, not doing anything is a disaster. It's just going to happen faster. But I think the questions I've raised and some of the others, if there's a way to answer them tonight, that would be really good on a policy level, given the drought and the impact it has in the Central Valley. I hope the council, not necessarily tonight, but would adopt a resolution urging the members of Congress from the Central Valley to support legislation addressing climate change. It's man-caused primarily, and if we don't take the steps, it's not just the valley that hurts, it's international. Thank you.
Carol Mall. And then Susan Cobberly.
Good evening. My name's Carol Mall. We own three pieces of property in Fresno. We live on Bullard. We have a nine-unit apartment building out by Fresno State, and we have a four-unit apartment building down at First and Belmont. Yesterday, I got my water, I got to quit calling it water bill too, but attending these meetings and reading things in the newspapers, I think a whole lot of people are confused. So I brought my utility bill, and I want to tell you what it's in there. The total utility bill is $212.84. That's for our nine-unit apartment. Then you have to add to that $45 for trash pickup. So that comes out to $258 for one month's utilities. Our water bill is $42. That's for nine units, about 17 people. You divide that out, and it's $2.50 a month for each person. I spend $2.65 for a glass of tea at Starbucks. This is for a person to live for a month. We have not required them to shut off the water. We did send a very sternly written note to all of our tenants, and my husband is president of homeowners association. Everyone in our association got a letter saying that there will be no outdoor watering on your own. The only watering is community watering. There will be no washing of cars. There will be no hosing down of sidewalks. And please try to conserve water. So we were in San Diego last year, and our phone started ringing. We were at a conference, and my husband's phone was buzzing because we had a malfunctioning water meter or water sprinkler head. And we got all these calls from people. People are conserving, folks. And we... And we got all these calls from people, people are conserving, folks, and, uh, and we, what my concern is, is that we have to provide water for our tenants. If these wells go dry, I want to know what your plan is for providing water to the people of that area if the wells go dry. Secondly, um, we're members of the Apartment Association, and they called today, and the Apartment Association is supporting this, they, they think it's way past time to vote on this, and we would encourage a yes vote. As you know, I was on the Utility Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Susan Cobberly, and Stephanie Frederick is next.
Mr. President and members of the council, I come to you today. I, the last time I stood up and spoke, I said I'd like to turn on the water and get a glass of water in the morning. I still like that. Um, I spoke to my son today, he has a house here in Fresno, I think it's in Missoria's district, and he said, "Are, are you at home?" And I said, "No, I'm going to go to the city council today to speak about water rates." And he says, "What's that all about?" I don't know, he's 45 years old, he should know what it's all about, but I said, "Well, the water rates have to be raised so that we have water available." He says, "How much is that gonna be?" And I said, "Oh, about 30%." He says, "Oh, my goodness." I said, "Well, that's really not very much money if you go to Starbucks." Of course, I stopped going to Starbucks a long time ago, but I'm sure I can save up enough money to pay for my water. Anyway, I encourage you to pass this plan on the water rates. Thank you.
Stephanie Frederick, Martin McIntyre, next.
Mr. President, members of the city council, Stephanie Frederick, 2658 East Olivoio in District Six. Uh, I support the water plan. Just a brief comment about the mega drought. If we are facing a mega drought, and not another drop of water or a snowflake falls in the Sierras, we are sunk, no matter what scenario the council proceeds with, because all of the water comes from the Sierras. We have no choice but to gamble on future precipitation, even under the do little or nothing scenarios, including uber conservation. I believe that Recharge Fresno gives us the highest odds of having water for the future, because it's the only strategy that allows our aquifer to recover, and it does that because it gives us a shot at mountain water. We are playing the odds, it's true, but we're playing the odds with a smart plan. It would be a shame to back away from it now. I think the odds are good that in a few years from now, we're gonna be very proud of our plan. Thank you very much for everything you've done, and I hope that you will vote for the water plan tonight. Thank you.
Martin McIntyre. And then Tyler Mackey.
Good evening. Martin McIntyre, 3244, um, West Fremont, Fresno, California. I'm here this evening to speak in support of Recharge Fresno. I will allow, though, uh, yesterday, when I decided to change my travel plans in order to attend this evening, I realized that, uh, there's little to no chance I'm going to change anyone's vote, uh, on the dais, uh, this evening. But nonetheless, I thought it was important to get a couple things on the record. First, despite all of the record, or rhetoric, I should say, that you have heard over the past six months, there is no basis to question the technical, financial, or hydrologic basis of this plan. It is essentially the same plan updated, but the same plan that has been developed over the last 25 to 50 years, and at least three different independent efforts by hundreds of experts. It has variously been adopted, um, or endorsed by the County of Fresno, the City of Clovis, the City of Fresno, Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control District, and the Fresno Irrigation District. I do wish that this conversation were occurring in an environment where I could magically peel back the mantle of the earth. We had this conversation with the ability to look down into that hole, and what we would see was a shockingly depressed aquifer. We would see high-value assets, infrastructure hanging above the groundwater table, and we would see groundwater contaminants migrating into drinking water wells that are being overpumped because we're not making adequate use of our surface water. But I want to thank the mayor and every one of the council members who've put all this time into this process, but especially on behalf of people in Fresno, I want to thank those of you who are willing to support a safe, reliable water supply for families and businesses in our community. Thank you.
Tyler Mackey.
I thank the council for its time. I'm a district for voter and a rate payer. I recognize that our problem must be fixed. Again, I appear before you to petition you to, uh, into consideration that this water rate increase in infrastructure project still failed to provide for adequate general public oversight and tune out the voices of over 40,000 households who voiced opposition during the 218 protest process. Earlier today, this body had the chance to quell these concerns of members of the public who are distrustful of this body's ability to properly manage our tax dollars. Through the, though the Enterprise Capital Management and Citizens Oversight Act was passed, the concerns of multiple members of council, the mayor, and all public attendees were ignored when they asked the, that the nine-man oversight committee include at least one or two members of the general public. Councilmember Brand stated with great hubris that this act was not about making the public feel good. Listening to the speakers tonight, I think it should. Cutting the vast majority of households out of the public review process by disqualifying them from board service hardly sets the tone that they are, you are serious about your commitment to public inclusiveness, or that you have respect for public input. We are told that we can come to the meetings and speak our three-minute piece. I'm not convinced, as every speaker this morning was asked, uh, for general public inclusion, and in turn were lectured to on why it was a bad idea, told we did not have the skills, and our petition was ignored, even though many members of the council sympathized and made similar requests for an amendment. So instead of including one or two highly engaged, intelligent, impartial citizens with the diligence to honestly review projects and provide you feedback and public perspective, the proposal called for an exclusive board of builders, contractors, and architects to review what regular citizens were deemed incapable of understanding. We are to trust that these handpicked contractors, architects, and engineers will make sure our money is spent wisely and that the water project is completed on time and on budget. But who's looking out for the average Joe in his wallet? This body has a bad reputation for ignoring public input and petition. It will be 133,000 average households that will foot this half-a-billion-dollar bill. It will be $30,000 wage earners that see a 1% increase in their total tax obligation while being cut out of the oversight process. Voters should not support this water rate increase without public inclusion, a vote on this project's oversight committee. This is the one way that the voice of the people can carry equal weight with that of industry experts. Those of you who believe in fair democratic process, public oversight, transparency, and the need to restore the public trust and confidence must continue to seek general public inclusion in the oversight of this project. You have to get this right and restore public confidence. Do not let us down, postpone the vote if you need to, but the people want and deserve inclusive government, not more exclusive government.
Jerry Prieto. Jerry Prieto?
Jerry Prieto, 2517 North Duwulf Avenue, Fresno, California. I come up here to thank Martin for the history lesson, my good friend Martin, but I want to make it very clear, I am a member of the Irrigation District Board, FID Board, Division One, and the current board has not taken a position on this project. He mentioned that FID had endorsed it previously, and I want to know that this, this current project and this current board, we have not taken a position on it.
We are now out of, um, cards that were submitted, however, as I stated, if you did not submit a card and feel as if you want to make a, a comment to council, now would be the time to come down. You are free to, uh, come to the lectern and state your name and, and address for the record.
Councilmember Baines, Member of Council, good evening. My name is Charles L. Krugman, I reside at 1237 P Street in the City of Fresno. I was not planning to speak on this issue this evening, however, while listening to the meeting on the internet, I felt compelled to come and give testimony. This is the advantage of living a block away. I've heard and read much about all the concerns for the residents, residential owners that, uh, may need, uh, compensation for their rate increases. What I have not heard in this process is concern about the number of renters in Fresno who are affected by this. While renters may not directly pay water bills, as a result of increased rates, their rents will undoubtedly be increased by the property management companies and their owners. Having previously done property management, when the cost of services goes up, I know that there is no other alternative. My questions that I have is that, why is the, uh, brunt of, of this increase, which the infrastructure repairs are definitely needed, uh, why is this not falling on the hands of future developers and the current development that is going on, on the fringes of the city? Uh, I believe that if we are going to continue to allow large-scale projects to be built in, in Fresno, and large-scale development to continue, they need to pay their share of the cost of this development. So I believe that this, uh, current proposal with the rate structure needs to be voted down, and other ways need to be explored to make the needed infrastructure repairs and cut corners when necessary. Mr. Vegem and other people have presented various options that would probably be more, uh, prudent than spending large amounts of money on this proposal with, uh, few guarantees of ongoing water supply. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other members of the public that would like to make a comment? Step to the lectern and state your name and address for the record.
President Barnes, council members, mayor. My na, my name is Mark Reynolds. Uh, my address is 166 West Peace River Drive. I've lived in this area for about 39 years. I've lived in Fresno, uh, just for two years. I'm not an expert in water. I didn't plan on coming down here and speaking tonight. I probably am an expert in construction, I work for Span Construction Engineering. So my main focus is on business development, and I have a great concern about job growth, bringing business back to Fresno and back to California. But that can be discussed at another time. I've he, I've heard tonight, discussed about the drought, I've heard conservation, climate change, change, even the almond growers, come up here and talked about the almond growers. Well, I think conservation is a separate issue, I think the gray water program's a separate issue. There's things that you don't have control over, you don't have control over the drought, the climate change, and probably not growing almonds. I also brought my water bill with me tonight. I do believe that this is a good plan, from what I've seen of it. I think it's gonna help the community. You have control of this, and I would urge all of you to vote yes. And I'll look forward to seeing you at another time. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address the public, I mean, address the council? Now then state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council. My name is Richard B. Renteria. I live in, uh, District Three, President, uh, Baines District. I'm here to talk about the, uh, proposed, uh, rate plan. I'm, I'm on Doug Vegem's side on this one. I don't have the main recognition of a Poya, a Vegem, a Swearengen, or anybody else in this room. But I do know that I've been attending these meetings either in person or on Comcast 96. It seems that we, we seem to lost, we've lost track of really what's the general issue of what we got going. We're having a special meeting because of a water rate plan we want to change. We had a special meeting when it was a Measure G plan. We had a special meeting when it was, "Let's revitalize downtown." We had a special meeting when it's FPOA, need to talk about the union and how we can, uh, cut down on the police force. We need to talk about Fresno Fire Department, their plans of how we can better serve our public Fresno, but at the same time, our hands are tied. We need to talk about how our 2008 mayor had promised jobs in the meantime, sold out the commercial, uh, garbage of our city which was making money. Measure G and any other thing that was thrown in front of us was a result of poor government, bad leadership, people concerned about their own political ventures. If you don't, if you do not like your job, and you don't want to represent your district or your city, and you sit up here and eat chips and drink coffee and look at your internet on your, your, uh, e-phone or your mail, instead of giving the undivided attention, then you're not representing the city of Fresno. That's my concern. The water rate is an issue we can get around. We have bus transport, transportation problems, we've got roads that need development, we'll be so behind that it's embarrassing to say that we're worried about the water. We're gonna get by one more year. An elec, an election's coming up in 2017, uh, 2016, but the new mayor will be in 2017. Sometimes things don't work out the way they're supposed to. Big deal, let's get on. Fresno, we're better than this. Everybody represent. We're, we're all on the same, we're all on the same page. I mean, we live in the same city, let's get on the same page. Quit bickering and fighting. Let's figure this water rate thing out. We should have done this in 2008 when the mayor was elected. Not now. We're eight years behind the schedule, and we're gonna keep doing this, prolonging it.
Your time, your time is expired.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
I apologize, thank you.
No problem. Do we have any other members of the public that will, I'd like to address the council? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment. Bring it back to the dais, we have several council members that are, um, anxious to obviously respond, so we will start with Councilmember Brandau. Is that, is that good for you? That worked. Okay, let's see if. How about now? Okay, there we go. All right, I think, uh, you know, it's, this process has gone on for so long, and Tommy, I, I really appreciate, uh, how many times I've sat through your presentation, that's what I appreciate. But, uh, you've done great, and, uh, you convey that message well. And a lot of others have been and heard this now a whole bunch of times. I appreciate everybody, I know several of you mentioned that you came to multiple, um, of the water informational meetings, and I, I thank every citizen who did everything that they could do. The other day, I was on the radio, and, um, Doug, I got asked the question, uh, "Can you tell us one positive thing that Doug Vegem did for this?" In your opinion, Councilman Brandau, because I had made it clear I was gonna vote yes on the recharge situation. And, uh, you know-
And, you know, it took me a minute. I came up with something on the radio, but it really wasn't the best thing. So the best thing that I could say is your efforts in, your efforts led to time where the city of Fresno improved the situation. Okay? And I'm being serious, and I bet you a bunch of people don't want me to say that, but probably true. However, here we are tonight. We have improved the situation. Now knowing that, we just can't sit and sit and sit and sit and sit and sit. We'll become guilty of what has put us here in this position. We've been put in this position. Let me tell you, I probably, probably every single council member knows what it's going to feel like in a few minutes to vote on raising rates. It's no fun, and I don't, and I don't think that anybody knows it more than I do. So it's very difficult. So I've already, I've already heard from a lot of people that are going to, that have told me that they're going to, if you vote for this, we're going to challenge you and all that kind of stuff. But at the end of the day, and now I'm just doing my little part, and I'm going to make a motion here in a second, but at the end of the day, it doesn't matter whether somebody wants to challenge me in two years or get mad at me or yell at me. I have to do what I think is right. Okay? And I have listened to this information over and over and over again, like many of you. And I agree with lots of points. This project is so complex that you can dissect it from any angle, and you're going to come up with a lot of good ideas, and multiple people have different sides of that story. So I appreciate everybody's participation. I have to do, though, what I feel is the best thing to do, irregardless if it costs me personally. And I don't think I could live with myself if I become somebody that kicks the can down the road. I've complained about that for so long in my life that now I'm here, I just can't do it. So I'm going to be supportive of this project, and I'm going to not make a lot more comments. I've talked about it. I think everybody, I recognize most of you, so you've been here with us many evenings talking about water. So I'm going to talk about, I'm going to just want to thank our, you know, before I make my motion, I want to thank our experts, some of them that came from Sacramento to be with us tonight. So I want to thank, well, Dave Orth is more local than that, but Cassie and Darren and then Gary Serrato, I want to thank you for showing up tonight. I think you'll probably have some questions from some of my fellow council members, but I do appreciate that, that you're here tonight. A couple of weeks ago, I was in North Fresno at a Save Mart. I had a little table set up, and I had a little sign that said, come by and meet your councilman and ask me questions and talk about, and I had a little sign that said water and high-speed rail and crime and some of the issues that I hear a lot about in North Fresno. So I just wanted people to talk, and a lot of people came up and said, you know, councilman, we know, I know that we need this infrastructure, but it's also very expensive. And that was in North Fresno. I was hearing that in North Fresno. And they would, and they asked me, several of them asked, that was the consensus message that I was getting, and several of them would look me in the eye and say, is this the best deal for Fresno? So, you know, after thinking about it a couple of days, I thought, do I, can I tell them that I know that it's the best deal for the city of Fresno? So I put the brakes on this project about one month ago today, I think it was. And we were, we were supposed to vote on this last month, but I put the brakes on the project to ask if it was the best deal that we could get. And I challenged our mayor, actually. And I challenged our state legislatures that come in to Fresno and represent parts of Fresno, because the city councilman doesn't have that much pull in Sacramento. But I challenged our state legislatures, and surely our mayor has some pull, and so they got busy, and the result of that was we saved an additional 12%. Now I heard on the, now, 12% on our rates when we stalled that item. We had a lot of help. We had a meeting here in the room next door, and Councilwoman Soria was there with me, and so was Councilman Baines, and we entertained some of the folks that came from Sacramento tonight and others. And the result was that it was 12% less and $104 million savings to Fresno ratepayers. And I heard on the radio yesterday, you know, that's not enough. You know, for some, I mean, it's just never enough. You can't ever do good enough, I guess. So I was happy to, I was happy to participate with that. I've been happy to see some of the things that my other council members have got involved in. Just this morning, most of you weren't here in the room this morning, but this morning, Councilman Olivier and Brand passed an act that oversees, puts a committee together that oversees all projects in Fresno. I can't remember if it's 20, this is a $429 million plan, and this one, 20 million or more, any project, there's a lot of projects of 20 million or more. Now they're going to have a review board, a review process. So I appreciate that. And Councilman Olivier, that was an outstanding idea. And Councilman Brand, I appreciate you doing all the heavy lifting, drafting that document. Very valuable. And I've heard that we've got other valuable amendments to this plan tonight as well that I'm going to let others talk about. So we are trying, folks. We're trying to be different from what you've seen in the past. Okay? I remember, I grew up in Selma, and I remember picking up the Fresno Bee and reading about council members spending more time and energy fighting each other and trying to advance the city. So I appreciate all of our council members and our staff for putting all the time in on this one huge issue. I'm going to make a motion tonight to approve the staff recommendation to draft Recharge Fresno. In other words, a yes vote.
I'll second.
Yes. Did you stop me? Oh, I thought I heard something. Councilman Olivier seconded? Thank you. I want to add a few things that are not currently on the vote in my motion. One is what I call a poison pill. I don't know what you call it, but I call it a poison pill. That means this project absolutely cannot go $1 over the $429.1 million projected. And I know that's a lot of money, but I know there's several of you that made talks about how government costs always go over. Well, on this plan, especially with what Councilman Olivier and Brand passed this morning, it's got a review committee that can review the project as it moves. Well, with this poison pill, I'm not, I'm going to, inside the motion, this project cannot go over that price. So if it begins to go over that price, instead of going over, that means the project will be cut short somehow. All right? I would also like to add...
One second.
Okay, thank you. I'd also like to add that for the life of the five-year rate increase, okay, it's five years, every year, we're going to have it go up a little bit more, 8%, 8%, 4%, 4%, something like that. And for the five-year life of this rate plan, there will be no additional utility bill rate increases. And one of these ladies brought up her whole utility bill, and that's what I'm talking about. Not just this, not just this water, but the utility bill. We have to respect our ratepayers. So I'm going to add that into this motion. And then also, I'd like to add, and this is what I spoke about the other day when we went back to the water tower, that the administration shall provide to council a rate review and reconciliation report prior to each annual rate increase. So this plan increases the rates once a year, a little bit more, 8%, 8%, so on. But every year before that rate increase, I'm asking for a review of the rates and a And now the rates cannot go up, but they can go down. From when we vote on them tonight, they can't go up, but they can come down, and I'm still very interested in bringing them down. As a matter of fact, the way we brought them down in the four weeks since I put the brakes on this project was we got a large low-interest loan from the state of California. We have other opportunities to do exactly that all over again. As a matter of fact, that low-interest loan was for the surface water treatment plant itself, and that turned out to be $186 million at 1.2% instead of 4.5% or something like that. But we have another opportunity almost as big, and that's an application for the pipes part of this project, and that's $154 million. And I'm keeping my fingers crossed the state of California can help us equally with that part of the project, and we could realize another several dollars off per month, per person, maybe another 12%. So to staff, I would like to direct that next week, we come back with that application for the pipes part of this project, and that will take months to see that application through. But I'd like to begin that as soon as possible so that before the rates go up next time, we can maybe reconcile, and maybe the rates won't go up as much. There are also opportunities inside of the water bond, and the water bond, the state of California is just in the infancy of rolling out the water bond to cities like Fresno and cities and counties all around California. So as the water bond gets rolled out, there are many folders that indicate opportunities for the city of Fresno to reduce rates even more. This is what I'm talking about, reducing rates, and we will have an annual rate review and reconciliation. To Tommy, we've met a bunch of times. For as many times as I've heard your pitch publicly, we've met another time or two privately and talked about how we can make this plan the best as possible, and I appreciate all of the hours you've put into this. You and I talked about an area that we haven't talked a lot about up here at the dais, which is the ongoing operations of the plant. This is not the new construction. This is the price we pay for chemicals, the price we pay for different things that we need on a day-to-day basis, and I'm asking you to squeeze those prices as well, because maybe we can get a dollar or two out of those, out of those prices as well. So those are directions to staff. But my motion is to pass the rate increase and for recharge Fresno, but to add these three things, the poison pill, not to exceed the $429 million price tag, and no new rate increases to the utility bill for the life of this rate plan, and annual rate review and reconciliation. And that's my motion. Clint, did you second all of that stuff?
Yes.
All right, and I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brandau, Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I also will be brief. I first wanted to thank our... What? I'm always brief. I have this reputation for talking too long.
I don't think they thought Councilmember Brandau was brief.
Oh. I didn't think he was too bad tonight. Well, I will start off by thanking our staff, of course, the Department of Public Utilities staff, all the city staff that have put so many hours into figuring this out. I also wanted to thank the people in the Public Relations Department of our city for doing such an excellent job, taking the recharge show on the road, actually engaging the public, soliciting public comment, public education. I thought the outreach that they did, especially coming from a public communications background, I thought that the work they did was very admirable, so I wanted to extend a special thanks to them. And also to the city manager and Mayor Swearengen, thank you for your commitment to this, to seeing it through, to making it better the second time around. I appreciate that. As some of you may know, the first time this came to us, I voted against it. And the reason why I voted against the project was because I believed at that time that the rate increases were too much for my constituents to bear. In the 7th District, as in many other parts of our city, of course, it's no secret that people are dealing with, or we have areas of high-concentrated poverty and folks on fixed income, folks with other income problems, and I didn't think they'd be able to absorb that kind of rate increase. So I voted against it. Since then, the proposal has improved in three major ways, and it seems like whoever speaks adds something in to make it a better proposal. Number one, the assistance program was created, and I believe it's a creative way to help people who are on fixed incomes and have problems with their utility bills. The water affordability credit, I think, is a great way to go, and I think it will end up working, and I think it will end up being very helpful to many, many, not just folks in my district, but across our city. I also wanted to talk about the loan that was recently confirmed from the state of California. This is going to bring significant savings to ratepayers, and we just heard from Councilmember Brandau. It's $104 million total savings because we asked and because we worked and because got in touch with the right people and made this happen. So I wanted to thank Councilmember Brandau for his work on this. I wanted to thank you for standing up and standing tough and hanging tough and standing alone for intervening and demanding action from the state of California, saving us 12%. I wanted to also cite as the third reason how this program has improved over the past months as the Enterprise Accountability and Oversight Act. This was passed by this council this morning unanimously. It will require the city to specifically name the construction projects to be financed by any bond. Just to name a few other requirements, it will require that money left over at the conclusion of a project be used to reduce rates in the case of Department of Public Utilities projects, and that's something that we all can enjoy. It will require that city departments identify projects totaling more than $1 million and come to the city council for final approval before work is begun. And it also establishes that nine-member citizen oversight panel, one appointee per council member and two by the administration, to meet twice a year to evaluate major projects like the one before us tonight. This building has a bad reputation with many people because how many projects have come forward to the city, the city council, and they begin, and it just doesn't turn out right? We're all afraid of that happening, not just with this project, but anytime we push the button on a high-ticket or a big-ticket item, that's a fear we all have. This act, this Enterprise and Accountability and Oversight Act, and I wanted to thank Councilmember Brand for approaching me to partner on this, and I wanted to thank him for throwing in so many of these, so many of these great items to prevent mistakes like that from happening. So that won't happen again. We won't find out three or four years into this thing that we're way behind schedule and we're going to go way over budget. This council and this administration have prevented that from happening. I'm very confident in that. I'm very confident that our ratepayers are well-served by what these public servants have all done. I know the committee will do a good job, and I know that these, these regulations on us and regulations on the way we're going to build this project are going to deliver it in a reasonable way and hopefully on time and under budget. So with the right assistance, with the significant savings from the state of California, and with the robust oversight, I believe the project will be a success, so I will be voting for it tonight. I've had a chance to talk with some of my constituents over the past couple of days, and whenever there's a big vote like this coming up, we get a lot of phone calls in the office, and I call, well, I try, I know I played phone tag with you, Nancy, but I know that we almost were able to hook up. But I wanted to share with you one of the, one of the phone calls I had. And it was an older gentleman who called, and he told me, my wife and I are retired. We live in your district, Clint. We're really concerned about this. Our rates are going to go up, and we don't know if we're going to be able to do this. And so I chatted with him a little bit, and he told me, you know, I know we need to do this, and I voted no. This constituent who I spoke to on the phone told me that he checked off the no box and mailed it in, so he was one of the no votes that we received. And then he said, you know, Clint, I voted no. I don't know if we can afford it, but I know we need it. And then he said something that was, it was really quite humbling, and I'll share it with you. He said, Clint, I trust you. He said, Clint, I trust you because you were elected to do the research and do the reading and make sure that these kinds of things don't go south for us. You are our advocate, and I trust you. And really, just as an ordinary guy, that's a very humbling and emotional thing to have someone else say to you. And I know the seriousness of this. I know the price tag, but it's for this constituent and others like him that I'm taking this vote very seriously, and I would not vote for it if I were not confident. And I would not vote for it if I were not confident that we had a good plan in place and that we wouldn't be letting him down. So with that, I will cast a yes vote tonight. Thank you, Council President.
Councilmember Brand.
Thank you, Council President. It will be long. I'll shorten it up. I want to, again, start out and recognize the people that have put a lot of work, really over two years, starting with Tommy Esquera and all the staff, you know, in the Department of Public Utilities, the clerks, to the middle managers, to the department head, everybody put a lot of effort in this. And some of the comments that have been made over the last couple of years are really very disparaging of city workers. And I've been here over six years, and I can say honestly, from all levels of city workers to the top in different departments, almost the vast majority of people I encounter are dedicated, talented, hard-working people that make a major contribution to this city. I want to thank our mayor, who's done an outstanding job, consummate job, of selling and promoting and doing the right thing, taking, having the political courage to go and tackle something that you have a bright future, that you're willing to do what's right for Fresno. And to my fellow council members, remember Baines as the council president and his leadership, my colleague Paul Capriolio, what we did last fall in the Water Conservation Act, Steve Brandow on working with the state and trying to find the most money we can have to reduce the rates, remember Quintero, who's been a champion for his district, an advocate for trying to find a way to push the city to lower the rates, my colleague, Mr. Olivier, who's worked with me recently and has been here for, really, for four years on all these things we've worked together, and especially to our new member, Soria, who I have met and discussed and am very, very impressed on how she approaches things. And yes, there are people who put more than 100 hours beside me into these items. She's put 200 hours, and I believe she has. She has been very thorough, and she's going to make a great addition to the Fresno City Council. This vote tonight, I've said this before, well, it's an historic vote. It's probably the most important vote I will take in my two terms on this council. And as with the mayor and as with the council members who vote on this item, it's a very courageous vote because you're putting public stewardship ahead of political ambition. And that's something that a lot of politicians can't claim. You know, adopting this program, this $429 million program that Mr. McIntyre has said has been in the works for really 25 years, and had we did it 25 years ago or 10 years ago, it would have been a lot less money. But I can say today, if we don't adopt it today, if it's $429 million now, 10 years from now, it'll be $829 million. You know, we can't continually kick the can down the road. But adopting this program will address a major crisis in the city of Fresno, which is overdrafting our aquifer, that does have a finite resource to it, and put Fresno into a position of leadership on water management and having a, not only for my kids and my grandkids, a long-term, sustainable, safe water supply. And some of the stuff I want to talk about has already been addressed because the three major things I got from all the hearings that we had and the public testimony were reducing the rates, finding a way to have lower-income people have reduced rates, that's been done, finding all sources of funds to reduce the rates, which Member Brandow has done, Member Soria is working on some other stuff. And we have five years to find those things that can reduce rates, including what Clint and I did today on the affordability, I'm sorry, the Enterprise Accountability Act. And the third thing was this inherent distrust for the city. And the city has demonstrated in the past failure on fiscal management. And I want to say tonight to make it clear that in 2009, there was a demarcation in terms of a new administration coming in and new council members coming in. And this is not the council of 2000, not the council of 1980. This council has made major changes since 2009. I have drafted 16 legislative acts. Most of those were fiscal reform acts that build a foundation of fiscal stability in the city of Fresno. The mayor, back in 2012, did the Fiscal Sustainability Act, which says the city is going to have, every budget has to be balanced. We're not looking at just one year. We're now looking into the future for five years. And this is something I don't know any other city that does. These are things that are cutting edge. These are things that are forever, forever changing the course of Fresno. This is not the Fresno of the past. This is the Fresno of the future. And I believe that on the second go-around, I will publicly thank Mr. Vegem, that his work, with her, at times I definitely were at odds with and was angry with, but in the end, the final product is a better product. And we are never going to have a perfect, it's absolutely impossible. There's just too many things, from bond markets to political changes, regulations, and so on, that we can't control. But I feel that this effort has been above and beyond normal standards, even for private sector contracts. This has been a very successful effort. I've heard tonight and in the past that water conservation is a solution. And water conservation is important for this city and any city in a drought. But it won't resolve the issue of overdrafting, and it won't solve the problems of contamination in wells. It's good, but it won't solve those major problems. I'd like to have Mr. Esquera come up, please, and address some of the issues that were raised by some of the speakers on FID and the conveyance and our contract.
Yes, I'd like to do that. I might call you up, Gary, so be ready. I might call you up. So again, as I just reiterated a little bit, a few things that I said before, that, you know, it's a 40-year-old agreement, beautiful agreement. I mean, again, it's carried us through to this point. Never anticipated we would have a service water treatment plant, but we adjusted. We built a northeast service water treatment plant, and FID has been a fabulous partner in helping us accommodate that. You know, along with that is the city of Clovis. They serviced the city of Clovis Water Treatment Plant. So really, it is, though, and I was probably, I'm trying to think, Bruce took me and Gary to lunch downtown, and we sat down and got introduced. And as we were walking away, Gary said, "Hey, you know what? We gotta, we gotta work on that conveyance agreement. It's kind of a little bit outdated and needs to be updated." What I wanted to do was read one, a couple of just pieces from this, because, from the existing conveyance agreement. And one of the items is, "Whereas, it is recognized by the district and the city that both are charged with protection and preservation of underground water supply. That will not change. That has not changed. That remains the thing that we have to work together on. So it's not what we have to accomplish, it's how we have to accomplish it. We have new facilities. We have new regulations. We have new assets that we have to manage. And so consistent with the spirit of what this current agreement has, we've got to find a way to now work together to accommodate that, but still remain true to the spirit of what this agreement really is." And Gary and I have met on several occasions, and he's been waiting for me to get past this. He's been waiting for Bruce and I and George Jan to be in our, because we're going to be the ones working with him on doing this, to get through this thing so that we can get started on this thing, which is similar to the comment we had with Darren over here. Darren wants to get the loan documents prepared, but he can't do that until we get past this thing, which is the approval of the rate. So I'm confident, again, they have made every accommodation for us the last 40 years, as we have changed facilities, changed direction, changed our operational needs. They've always been there for us. They're always going to be there for us. And we know what we got to do. We just, we just got to take the time to get together and work on making the mechanics of how do we work together on this.
So you feel confident we will find the solution?
Yeah. Gary, are you confident we can find a solution?
We've probably got more.
Yes, I have every confidence that we will find a solution. Again, we remain consistent with what we need to do. This groundwater supply thing is a mutual responsibility for both of us. This document contemplated that. What it didn't contemplate was, we were going to have changed conditions, and we got to accommodate for that now.
Right. Thank you. And I want to, you know, convey to the board directors and to the director of FID, our sincere commitment and appreciation and hope that we will, you know, find an equitable solution. And we take nothing for granted. We appreciate our partners in this deal. And there's been talk of delaying this item, and that's what the city's good at, is not doing things, delaying things. But again, I believe this is, we've put the time into it. So what are the consequences if we delay? And I know financially that if we just, for some reason, said, "Let's forget this thing. Let's kick it down the road," that within 12 months, we'll be running out of money on an operational basis. Within 12 months, we'll be in technical default on our bonds, which means, does the general fund have to step in to subsidize? A general fund that is still struggling to recover, a general fund that still needs to hire police officers and firefighters and parks workers and fire trucks and all the stuff we have that we can't afford to do that. The contamination of these wells is not going to go away. It's going to get bigger, and it'll cost millions of dollars to do it at a later date. And we'll continue to overdraft our aquifer. That won't solve that. And the cost, as I said earlier, will get higher. It's a simple truth of time and money. And the longer it goes, the more expensive it gets. In fact, every month we delay, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tommy, is by roughly $1.2 million in higher cost. It's, I think, it's come time for us to do it. Let me just conclude by kind of giving a different version of an old saying of the tale of two cities. The old Fresno, this Fresno of perpetual high unemployment, perpetual poverty, and a new Fresno that is in the top five in growing jobs and in one of the top cities in the United States. That's the first time I've heard that in probably 50 years. We're making progress in Fresno. The old Fresno of bad fiscal decisions by the council, and I said earlier, in the past six-plus years, we've passed several major fiscal reform policies, including the one that was passed today on a 7-0 vote. And we went to the charter on these items. The charter's been changed to make sure these changes are permanent and will encumber future councils. And an old Fresno had a decaying, neglected downtown for a number of years. And a new Fresno that has the seeds of recovery, that has over 500 units built in the last five years, and has a tech hub that now is going to go to like 50,000 square feet. This is, that we're finally making progress on our downtown, the core of our city, of an old Fresno of unrestained growth and urban sprawl, and a new Fresno that has passed a general plan that provides for balanced growth and infill that has not, for the first time I've been 50 years, expanded its sphere of influence in the city of Fresno. We are committed for good planning in the future. And finally, the city of negativity and what's the old axiom, "I've met the enemy, and the enemy is me." This is a city of hope, a city of resolve, and a city that's willing to embrace a prosperous future. So I fully and wholeheartedly endorse this plan and encourage my colleagues to do so. Thank you.
Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, President Baines. So I believe that each and every one of us in this room are here today for the same reason. We know that our city faces a number of challenges regarding our water. We know that we have a need to continue to provide clean, safe, and affordable water to the city of Fresno and to Fresnans here in our community, both city and those that live in the county. I do want to thank all of you that are here and those of you that have taken an interest over the last two years. I know that as a new council person, I've been much more directly involved over the last few months. But I have, and know that I have been very diligently in the last couple of months since I've been elected, researching and doing my homework to make sure that the decision that I make tonight is the best-informed decision and that I truly represent and make the best decision for my constituents. I do want to thank the staff because you guys have made yourselves available. I've gone out to the wastewater, to the treatment plants to do tours. You guys have responded to the concerns and questions that I've raised over the last few months. I have, like I said, carefully studied this project and understand the current and the future needs that the city of Fresno has for water. I know that many of you guys read my concerns that I outlined on the Fresno Bee. They were posted yesterday and published today in the paper. And I want to actually bring up Mr. Serrato to ask him a couple of questions because there are still a number of those concerns that I would like clarifications. And for those of you that didn't have an opportunity to read what I outlined in the Fresno Bee, I did state publicly some of my concerns with the appropriate sizing of our facilities and as it directly related to our water conveyance agreement, which has been partly conversation that we've had today. But I do believe that it warrants additional questions so that we're all clear as to what this project means and what the water conveyance agreement means as it relates to the new facility we're proposing to build. So I just want to ask you, Mr. Serrato, if you could just explain to us, I know that we're in the middle of negotiations, or we're going to start negotiations to get this conveyance agreement done. But can you just help me understand the components of the agreement, how that would be necessary to determine the optimum size that is proposed for a treatment plant that will meet the demands of the city, but also given the entitlements that we do have and that we have had a discussion about over the last few years?
Let me start out by saying this, that FID has been at the table three different times with city staff to take a look at the conveyance agreement and try to start the process of looking at the things that were going to need to be addressed. That's why my comment to Tommy, and Tommy, I hope you didn't take it the wrong way, we just didn't have a lot of success. But I think with Tommy, I think if we can sit down, because I think he's sincere and trying to accomplish something, I think we can sit down and have a meaningful But there are some huge components in this conveyance agreement that are important to the Fresno irrigation district. And number one, we love the conveyance agreement the way it is. Okay? We don't want to change it. Okay? But, you know, we understand that the city needs something a little differently. Okay? The components in here that are going to be key is, you don't have storage. You don't have storage in Pine Flat. You do have storage in Fryent, and I've stated that before. But that Fryent supply has been impacted by a number of things. CBPIA, that passed in 1992, that took 800,000 acre-feet of water away from the CBP project and gave it to the environment. San Malquin River Restoration Program, that took an impact, you know, we're all taking that impact. You heard somebody say there's water going down the river. Okay? Wasn't going down there before. We don't think that salmon are going to make it back. But the fact of the matter is, there's water going down there. We lost a lawsuit. Fryent lost a lawsuit. All right, let's just say this, Fryent settled a lawsuit. And so there's an impact. When surface water, the snowpack and inflows at Fryent Dam reach over 40 or 400,000 acre-feet, the next 70,000 acre-feet become available to San Malquin River Restoration. So we're going to have impacts. So we're going to have impacts on those. So those are things that we're going to need to take a look at, which are going to impact what's happening at Pine Flat Dam. And we're going to have to manage that water supply. You can't have two people managing that water. So we can't have the city managing it and FID not knowing what's going on. And you can't have FID and the city doing two different things. So we're going to need to come together. We're going to need to figure out how we're going to manage that water supply. Those things are key components to this. And then the other thing is, is that I believe probably the biggest thing in trying to renegotiate the conveyance agreement, we just got to have trust in each other that we're going to be able to accomplish that and get there, you know? I'll be frank with you, we just did not have it with your previous staff.
Okay. So you mentioned the storage capacity is an important component for this conveyance agreement. So what does that mean? And I just would like to maybe get like a 101 on the entitlement. We know we have an entitlement and then we're having allocation. So what does that mean for us in terms of having the ability to build the treatment plant that we're being, that we're proposing?
Well, you know, there have been some words that have been stated here. Number one is entitlement, water rights. And I've read the water codes that says that you don't have that. Those water rights lie within the Fresno Irrigation District. It's the Fresno Irrigation District whose name is on the licenses at the State Water Resources Control Board. So, but what happens here essentially is that with the conveyance agreement, it allows the city through the section of the water code to go out and collect the assessments of the lands that are within the city. Then what the city does is it collects the assessments and those assessments are the assessments that we apply. And what they do is a pass-through. And so FID receives those assessments through the city. And what that does is allow the city to receive the water that would go to those lands, okay? The issue here is because there is no storage component that comes with it, and it's written within the conveyance agreement, is that, and it's very clear in the conveyance agreement, is you run your water, the city runs the water at the same time that the farmers or the FID board decides to run that water. It doesn't allow for anything on the outside, okay? So if we ran for six months or we ran for two months, you're, the conveyance agreement calls that you run within that period as well too. So that's another issue that we're going to need to deal with. And the conveyance agreement is very clear that if the city of Fresno does not utilize that water, that we take that water, deliver it to our farmers. Again, they shut off their pumps, groundwater aquifer comes up because they're not competing for the same aquifer, the same water that the city is competing with or for.
So will we have water delivered on a year-round basis, given what you just stated in terms of, because we have to take the water when you deliver in terms of the schedule that you guys have with the farmers right now because we have no conveyance agreement?
When you take a look at the FID entitlement and when we want to receive it, there's two months, October and November, when there is no water entitlement that FID receives. So is that going to be two months that the city of Fresno is going to shut down their surface water treatment plant because we're not gaining it? And again, I'm giving you the 101 based on what the conveyance agreement actually says, okay? Have we done other things before in the past? We have, okay? The other thing is, is that there could be months when FID only gains the entitlement of 100 CSF, 100 cubic feet per second. And if you apply the 25% on that, you've got 25 CSF. It's not even going to, you know, half of it, you'll lose half of it in conveyance before it makes it down to the plant.
And so once this conveyance, how long will it take about an estimate of getting this conveyance agreement finalized?
It really all depends. I mean, if we all come together and agree on some deal points, and Tommy and I have worked on this and we've got some deal points done, but I still believe the more difficult points are going to be those issues that we go from this day forward. And so those are complicated. It's going to require attorneys' eyes on it. And so I, you know, I believe that we're probably at least eight to a year away, eight months to a year away.
I think that's eight months to a year. I think that's, yeah, I think that's, I think that's all the questions that I have for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also have a question for Tommy, if you can. So in regards to the conveyance agreement, I'm just, I'm trying to get, be comfortable with this agreement and the fact that we're creating a plant that may not get the entitled entire allocation essentially, and that we may be proposing a plant that we may underutilize. And so that's something that I want to make sure that we have some safeguards so that we are being good stewards of our taxpayer money. And so I know that we just hear that it will take eight to 12 months to finalize this agreement. And I don't know if the agreement will give us much more comfort in how much water and the reliability in terms of the amount of water that our city will receive so that we can fully utilize these treatment plants that we have. Because we know we do have a history of not fully running at capacity. And then most recently, as pointed, that our T3 was even not being operated until a few weeks ago. And so I've expressed these concerns. I express them again here publicly because I think that they're very valid and that we need to create some safeguards today if this project moves forward so that this water conveyance agreement protects our taxpayer money and that we build something that our residents can benefit, truly benefit, and that is the size that will help our city have a reliable source of water. So, you know, I want to ask you in terms of just, you know, the comments that were made by Mr. Serrato and, you know, the fact that you made a comment about feeling confident that we would get to an agreement. I think putting some safeguards in the current proposed plant would be something that I think should be part of the discussion.
So the question is?
So I guess in terms of?
I guess, I think I know the question. So let me ask it this way. I would say that actions speak louder than words. And so as an example, Gary Serrato and Bill Stretch, raise your hand, Bill, are currently delivering water to the T3 plant because we asked them to, to do it as a favor to us because we needed to get that thing up and running because of the groundwater contamination issues and the groundwater overdraft issues. And they stepped up like a good, true water supply partner would and started delivering water to that plant on January 29th? When did you say? January 29th. They gave it to us the date. We started talking about it in December and, so the actions of this organization, FID, have been outstanding. Doesn't talk about a water plant in here, talks about delivery schedules. They deliver water to our plant 11 months a year. They deliver water to Clovis Water Plant 11 months a year, 10 months a year. So it all goes back to this document was written to accomplish certain objectives 40 years ago. And as good water supply partners, we have been working together. And the time has just come now that we've got to really get it updated. So I would, I think Gary talked about it, the confidence, you know? I have confidence in these guys because they've been doing it. Their actions have spoken louder than any words I could speak to you right now in terms of how they're ready to serve us. Again, he is serving our southeast water treatment plant outside of what this allows for because it is the right thing to do. And again, it's more consistent with, whereas it is recognized by the district and the city that both are charged with the protection and preservation of the underground water supply. That is what is dictating the actions they have taken to this point. This is why they've been helping us. And I have every confidence they're going to continue to help us because they have. Again, I would like to, I don't have to think back in terms of I hope, I wish, maybe kind of, sorta, because he's been doing it. He's been doing it since we've had the water plants in place. And he's doing it when we added the new water plant. Those are the things that I have, brings the confidence to me that we're going to get this done. We got to make it consistent.
Okay. I have an additional question, actually a couple more questions. When exactly are we proposing to see the southeast treatment plan come online?
So we, the current schedule is built, is advertised in June, July, open award construction contract in November, and have it up and running September 2018.
So 2018. And the construction?
Construction would be between November of this year and September 2018. So about three years, 15, 16, 17, 18, yeah, three years.
Okay. So if construction starts by?
November.
November of this month. And so we're thinking there's an eight, about eight to 12-month period to finalize this agreement, right? I'd just be interested in putting some safeguard, a safeguard to ensure that this agreement will support the plant that we are proposing in terms of the amount of water that we are going to get. I'm so sorry. I'm just, I'm wondering, so if we start building the plant without an agreement, what are, are there any repercussions or what will happen?
So you're?
I guess I'm trying to figure out?
The nuclear option.
How much water will we get if we don't? If we don't have this agreement in place?
Gary, if I can, care if you can help, we're not talking about the total allocation. You're talking about the delivery and availability of that water as it occurs during the year. So we have a certain amount of entitlement, hundreds of thousands acre feet. The timing of how we receive that is where we have to kind of work through the mechanics of can you give me 12 months a year? Can you give me 10 months a year? That, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, that's all based on the.
Right.
Yeah, we're talking about, Tommy, we're talking about that, which is an important issue. And we're talking about other things within the conveyance agreement. One of the things that I was just reminded of, remember, I got to take it back to my board. So I got, I just need to weigh in just real quick because Tommy raised a point and I think it's important because I absolutely agree with Tommy and that I too am confident that we can reach and agree with FID. The fact that you've got the mayor's chief of staff and the city manager sitting at the table with the director should be a clear signal to FID that it's a different conversation. It's a different day with regards to these negotiations. And I am also confident that Tommy, that we will work something out because apparently and obviously, we were able to work, or FID was able to work out something with Clovis, who built a surface water treatment plant 10 years ago and has an allocation of 20,000 acre feet. If they were able to do it, we're able to do it because as the old adage goes, failure's not an option. So you have my commitment, and I think the mayor's commitment by the fact that she's asked her chief of staff, her city manager, and her director to sit with you, and we will deliver a new conveyance agreement that meets the expectations of all of our stakeholders.
So I'm still trying to figure out how I'm going to propose the safeguard, but I would like to see a safeguard that regarding this conveyance agreement that?
Let me, so here's the issue that I think Councilmember Soria is struggling with. We're very concerned that we don't build the southeast surface water treatment facility and not have actual water going to it, right? Not being able to serve that. So we don't want to overbuild. And it's a concern that we want to protect the ratepayer. So we understand that this conveyance agreement, as the FID general manager and multiple board members have now stated, is a pretty complex thing. And it sounds to me that it's, that it has more complexity than just the southeast surface water treatment facility that we're talking about.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because we have the recycled water stuff to talk about.
Right.
Recharge basins to talk about.
So what we're trying to figure out is obviously tonight, we are not as concerned with the entire conveyance agreement, more so we're much more concerned with some pretty specific aspects of it. And is it reasonable for us to, is there a reasonable expectation that we can say we would like to have this portion of the agreement in place concerning the southeast surface water treatment facility by the end of this year before we start construction?
That would be a, yeah, that would be, so that would be a reasonable, because that would be the control you would have.
Right.
You have to award, you have to award the construction contract.
Right. I think that's the safeguard that?
Council president, may I jump in on that? I think an appropriate safeguard would be that before rerating to the plant's full capacity, we have confirmation that the conveyance agreement is in place and would support the full rerating of the plant. Again, I look back over history, I look at the access to water the city of Fresno has had. I think putting such a stringent timeline on in this, in the next four to five months?
No, no, in the end of the year.
But, well, okay. I mean, getting, knowing for certain that we can get to an agreement that works for all stakeholders in the next two to three years, no problem. Can we get there by November? I don't know. We might be down to, we might have worked through 100 things and we've got one thing left and it come, and it's January 1st, right? I mean, I don't want to put the staff in a position of not taking the time needed to get this document right. And there are a lot of stakeholders. There are other board members at FID that need to be thoroughly involved. So I would suggest that A, a safeguard is a very smart policy intervention, but B, perhaps the timing could be different than your original suggestion.
So I think what we were trying to accomplish is a carve-out, to not require the entire agreement to be done for, to have our comfort. I think that was what we, and if I didn't say it right?
But you know what? I think it becomes extremely difficult for the staff and the technical people who are negotiating agreements if they're being directed which parts to pull out. All of this is connected. And I don't want to put our technical staff in a box that probably is going to actually make it harder to get where we need to go.
I think we're close.
I think the idea of?
I think, I think, I think, I think we're close. And I understand what Councilmember Soria is trying to do, and I think we're there. We don't want to have a facility, quite frankly, that we've overbuilt. So I want to, I want to say that.
Your names are all beyond that on the plaque and that would be?
May I ask, is that, so is, given the history of access to water supply in the city of Fresno, can you react to that? What is the danger or the risk level that you see that we might get to 2018 and not have access to water supply for 54 MGD? Can you address that point on?
Right. And again, I can only go by the outstanding performance of FID. What have they done to serve the city of Fresno? And so the limitation?
Tommy, can I, what have they done for not just the city of Fresno?
Clovis, you've been doing it for Clovis.
So, so was there a new conveyance agreement, a trigger when Clovis built their surface water treatment plant, or was it just they built it? Okay.
Okay.
And so?
So if you could please address the, so what is the risk? It's a perfectly reasonable and acceptable question to say, is there a risk level that 2018 comes, we've carried through this process, will there be water there?
Right. So the analysis based on the 50 years of data, we've taken the discount for stream restoration projects, for the San Joaquin Restoration Projects. We've taken some adjustment because people have talked about the climate change that we should be able to achieve 110,000. we should be able to achieve 110,000, now, we're, the difference between us and Clovis, the other difference between us and Clovis is that we have CVP water.
Right.
So, we add CVP water to our supply system, and so when you put the two of those together, the history has been 110,000 acre feet, 46 out of the last 50 years. Our problem has been we just can't use it. We just haven't been able to use that water. And so, now we're going to put the facilities in so that we can take those deliveries and use those, and those will be, those will be on a year-round basis.
So, just again, Council President Baines and Councilmember Soria, on behalf of the administration, I appreciate the intervention that says, we're going to put a trigger in place that's going to require the conveyance agreement to be completed. I think that creates the right sense of urgency, and I think it sends the right message to our partners that that is in fact the intent of this policy body. It's just simply my point that we need to put it in the right spot so that we can really have the most efficient and effective negotiations and get where we're all trying to go.
I think that's exactly, I know that's what we, what we want to do, we want to have that safeguard in there, and I appreciate you, Mayor, for weighing in, and I think we want to form this into an appropriate amendment, I think, and I think we had something in mind a little earlier, and I think we probably should talk that through, because that probably will get us where we want to get and put the proper safeguard in there, Councilmember Soria.
Possibly, yes.
I would say that.
Would you let, are you suggesting a recess to discuss that, or?
No discussion.
Yeah, if we can take five minutes.
All right, council members, back to the dais. We're calling the meeting back to order. Councilmembers Brandow and Brand, and Olivier. Councilmember Soria.
For the safeguard that I was speaking to regarding the conveyance agreement and the north, the Southeast Treatment Plan, I would like to make the motion that would state the city will not proceed with a rerating from 54 MGD to 80 MGD until there is confirmation that the conveyance agreement will support the rerating, and there is demonstrate, and there is demonstration that we will receive the water for the re-rate.
Asking me to do that? You asking me to add that?
Yes.
Yeah, I will, I will add that to that, to my motion. Councilman Olivier, will you add it to your second? Okay, we're good.
And I also wanted to make an additional motion, I know that there's- I know that there's been a lot of conversation about the affordability in our community and we know that we saw the graph that showed our rates lower than a number of other cities, but we also realize that the median household income here in our community is much less than San Francisco and other big metros. So I've identified another potential source that could help our community and add to the affordability program that was proposed. So I would like to make a motion to amend that the water rate solution include a provision restricting the use of all net proceeds from any lawsuit settlements or judgments related to groundwater contamination for TCP, MTBE, or DBCP to be used for the low-income rate subsidies or to reduce future rate increases. I do strongly believe that this could help us and will help many families here in the city of Fresno bear the burden of an increased water rate. Would you be willing to add the...
Yeah, so if I understand your amendment correctly, on any settlements from the pumps that are in suit, when there's a settlement there, any proceeds would go to rate reduction or the low-income subsidy element program? Okay, yeah, I'll add that to my motion. Absolutely, reducing rates even more.
And then the only other thing that I would like to add in terms of really trying to get to reducing the rate that the staff continue to work as diligently in seeking grants, I did identify additional source through the cap and trade auction proceeds, which I did mention in my op-ed. There is a water diversion program that could help our community if we are eligible for it. So I would continue to encourage the staff to go after water bond monies and other sources of funding that could help not go into loans but be free money for our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Soria. Councilmember Capriolio.
Finally, thank you. Tommy, I had a question for you. A lot of the comments from the people that were not necessarily in support of this project had to do with conservation and the rate that people pay. Is there a correlation or how does the conservation affect the rate that low, medium, and high-income people with their water situation?
So the rate plan that we put forth, so I'll start this way, that in 2003, average single-family residential was 2,400 cubic feet a month. 2014, it was 21.7. And our rate plan anticipates that at the end of the rate plan, that average water consumption of a single-family residential will be 16.5 hundred cubic feet. So we're looking for another 25% reduction. Part of that will be just our marketing and outreach efforts to promote that, education, and part of that will be directed toward just the way we've done the pricing structure is that we put more control of the bill in the citizens' hands by putting more of the cost in the consumption chart, so people can actually change their water bill cost by saving, be more efficient with water use.
So the more people conserve, the lower their water bill will be?
That's exactly right. That's our here, that's the clean way to say it. Save water, save money.
And then that affordable credit plan number would even get lower if people truly try to conserve.
That's exactly right.
Thank you. Listen, I wanted to have a few notes I wanted to address, and I agree with a lot of the comments of my colleagues. I think we've all done our due diligence. We're charged by our voters to do that, and this plan has been refined and refined, and I'm very thankful for that. Although I think it's not perfect because everyone in this room is not totally satisfied, some are, some aren't, but it takes care of our community for many, many years in the future as opposed to our predecessors who actually kicked this can right on our doorstep, exactly on our doorstep. I'm really happy and proud to associate with this group of colleagues and council members because they're willing to take that vote and they're willing to make a difference, and the political consequences matters not to any of us. It's the right thing to do, it's been long enough, we're ready to move on it, and tonight is the night. Again, this has been vetted at length, my comments have been the same throughout. I'm absolutely not going to kick the can down the road. I said that at the first meeting, and I am standing by that. Again, I've always said we must maintain local control of a local resource. It's absolutely critical. And I think Sacramento has said, if you don't get your situation under control, we will control it for you with our wisdom. If you've attended previous meetings, my definition of Sacramento legislators' wisdom is rules, regulations, hurdles, and taxes that burden us without addressing the specific needs of this community. I don't think we want to go down that road, and this plan will help us not do that. I wanted to draw another parallel perhaps. We talk about our taxes, with property taxes and sales taxes. With our property taxes, for every dollar you're taxed, about 20, 21 cents comes back to this community. The rest of it, gone. On your sales tax, approximately 10, 11 cents comes back to this community. Basically, 90 cents out of your tax dollar, gone. And I'm really, I'm just really upset that we don't have the ability to bring that money back to us. And what Sacramento does is give us our pittance, our pittance, and says, I hope you make ends meet, and I hope you can take care of your problems. And I'm kind of tired of our money going to improve Sacramento, San Francisco, Bay Area, Southern California. We're the Central Valley, we're the breadbasket of the world. We need that money just as much as anybody else, so... But I want to draw the parallel, the contrast to this. With this project, with this project, the fees that we pay, all of us pay, they will go directly to this project. They stay right here in Fresno. You get a dollar-for-dollar benefit from the fees that we're proposing in this particular project. It all is here, for once, dollar-for-dollar, finally. And I think we kind of overlooked the value of water, I hope not, but without water, there's no farmers, there's no valley economy, there's no job. I think a couple of citizens just frankly pointed out, we have no city. We're back to way back when. So we must take care of this, we must take care of ourselves, and I think this is the way to do it. I mentioned to Mr. Esquera, and I want to remind everyone that the success of this process depends on all the component parts, and a vital part of this process is conservation. And the conservation, remember, every drop of water counts. I'm going to say that a few times. Remember that, every drop of water counts. So we're concerned with conservation, the Capriolio-Brand, Brand-Capriolio Water Conservation Act was passed November 10th of 2014. It included many, many incentives. The binder is kind of thick, and it's for our benefit, and it is thick. And one of the, and those incentives, again, encourage us to save water because, remember, every drop of water counts. So part of that process is rebates. An instance that comes to me, and I mentioned it to the League of Women Voters, we spoke with earlier today and had a great conversation with you all. Right now, you can do a toilet replacement for under $40. I was at Costco, they have a low-flow, dual-flow, dual-flush-approved toilet for $87. With this rebate program through the Water Conservation Act, you will get $50. Net effect, $37, you got a low-flow toilet. That's pretty reasonable. Another conservation method through the city of Fresno is our water department, and the water department provided all of us with these bags of conservation ideas. They're all laid out here, and I'd like to invite each and every one of you to grab a bag. Maybe Oprah Winfrey's got nothing on us. We can't give away a car, but we can give away a conservation bag that has a low-flow showerhead, faucet controls, it's got documentation, ways to improve your yards, the whole conservation concept is contained in that blue bag. And if we would all implement that, it would work to our advantage. So I want to encourage you to take that. Now, for me, they also provide a home inspection for free. Make an appointment, they'll come to your home, they'll evaluate it, and they'll give you not just the problems, but they'll give you the answers, the solutions. So they came to my home, and they did that, and I got my bag, and I implemented a lot of the things they told me. And so I have my water bill here tonight, and two points on that, my gross bill, we think our water bill, our gross bill for me was $74.58. I'm going, wow, if that doubles in five years, I'm not real happy about that. And then with the education of the administration and the water department, we broke that down. Solid waste is $25, I'm rounding off, sanitation six, sewer, non-metered, 2581. And then I got to the key part of this bill, please pay attention to your bills because this, all the bills are the same. My total water metered standby charge was 1351, my consumption was $3.66. I have two teenage kids. And that, by implementing the things that we can do together as part of this whole process of conserving water, can result in that kind of bill. And I'm going to keep trying to do better and better. Got the bucket in the shower, all the things that you think about, we actually do that in my family. So I encourage all of you to conserve, it's absolutely critical for the total process that we're engaged in here. Please take a bag. I've sat here for two years, and if I had a dollar for every time I've heard about the boondoggles, I'd be a millionaire. And I want to address the critics who say this project is like past failed boondoggles, I think I read in the paper. This project is like past failed boondoggles, like Chauncey Metropolitan Museum, the French Restaurant, the Taco Factory, the Turkey Plant, it goes on and on. First, I want to say, I don't think it's really fair and reasonable to hold this council, this responsible council by virtue of all the acts that we've imposed and implemented over the last two years of my term and four and six years of my colleagues to pin that on us. And I think the critics are wrong for doing that. I think we all take our job very serious of protecting taxpayer dollars, and we're doing that tonight as well. I think it's critical that the public engage in this process that we have here tonight. I think it's critical that you elect officials that will make those tough calls, that will protect those tax dollars, that will not invest in these projects, and we're not doing that. We haven't done it, we're not going to do it. So please. The second part of this is, if we're comparing this present project to those past projects, it's like comparing apples to oranges. Why do I say that? These projects in the past may have been, I don't know, if it's a special project, a pet project, I don't know. You have Chauncey Park, who does that appeal to? Baseball fans, not the entire city of Fresno. We've got the Met Museum, who does that appeal to? People that like to go to museums and enjoy arts, not 100% of people in Fresno. So that's the apple. What's the orange? The orange is, this project affects every single family in the city of Fresno, every single person, 100%. So we're not going to compare boondoggles and apples to oranges. Stay focused, stay what this project is all about, and it affects every single person in our community. With that in mind, I'm going to support this project. I think it's the best thing for our community, I think it's the best thing for my children and my grandchildren when they come. I also wanted to say, and I don't think there's any dispute, but water is water, but it's not going to be good unless we do the pipes. And I don't think anybody disputes that, but I just want to confirm that the delivery system is critical, and I think that's an important part of this project, so let's not forget that aspect of it, and let's all participate in water conservation. Remember, every single drop of water counts. Thank you.
Councilmember Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you that showed up this evening and shared your concerns. It's been a good learning process, it's been good to hear from the both sides of the issue as well as hearing not only from our constituents in our districts, but folks throughout the city. And in particular, I'd like to thank the mayor's office and the chief of staff, George Ann, making yourselves available to our office and answering any questions that we might have or clarifying them. And Tommy, thank you as well for the field trip, appreciate it. Found out some things I didn't really care to know about, but that was something else. But I do have still questions, concerns, and I want to share with you a little bit of history that I'm somewhat familiar with. I remember in the, I was listening to Ms. Chahan make her presentation, and we spoke during the break, was that in the mid-'90s, there was a four-letter acronym that came into being, and it was called DBCP. And it was something really new to municipalities, and the, it was hard, when this regulation came down, that we had to clean up wells, and there was like 23 or 27 wells in southeast Fresno that needed to get cleaned up, and that it was even difficult at that time to find attorneys, to find attorneys that were knowledgeable to deal with it. And so the city had to, you know, really dig in to find those attorneys. Then, you know, it just seemed that after that started happening to not only Fresno but other municipalities, is that the state started coming down with new regulations saying, you got water contamination. Well, the water stayed the same, it tasted the same, and it, there really was no change, but yet it was what Sacramento was saying, this is what, these are the new regulations, and this is what you have to comply with. And Ms. Chahan, you mentioned that there might be some new ones coming up?
Actually, we just adopted MCL for hexavalic chromium, that was July 1st of 2014, and so there's going to be systems that are out of compliance with the Hex Chrome Regulation. The next one that's kind of on the radar is the 123 TCP that we've talked about, and there'll be systems, exactly like you said, they're in compliance one day, that if regulations are adopted, they do the monitoring and they're out of compliance.
I guess it's job security to some degree, but...
Some of it's driven by EPA, and then we have to follow suit. Some of them are California-specific regulations.
Oh, I understand, okay, thank you, thank you for clarifying that. So, you know, that's just another layer that we're going to have, that the city's going to have to deal with and come up with the funds to do that type of cleanup. So there's really, you know, those things that you just have to keep on your radar that you're going to be forced to come up with the funds to do that. Tommy, I want to ask you a couple of questions. One is that the comment was made by one of the council members earlier, and I believe it was Councilmember Brandau, that they wanted the cost fixed, you know, not spending a penny more, okay? So 429 million, what's your contingency for that?
What are we running right now in our contingencies?
For cost overruns?
No, not, we don't...
You won't have cost overruns?
We have contingencies for changing market conditions, but we don't have, assuming, we're not assuming going into cost overruns. What are you running?
Well, materials may go up.
25? 10 to 20%. And we've already included the cost escalators for our material...
So that's in the 429?
429 already has the cost escalators in it for labor, materials, those types of things. And then there's just stuff, like we're building the tank downtown, the T4 tank, found a buried storage tank that nobody knew about, wasn't documented, things like that are going to happen, so we have contingencies for those kinds of things.
Okay. So costs may go up, but we're going to have the monies to cover the...
We have a motion on the table to manage it to that degree, yes.
Been here too long to believe that.
It's gonna be, it can be done.
No, I understand, you make the best effort, you know, that's... One of the questions that one of the speakers made was as far as looking at the cost, that maybe new development pays its way, and not... costs, that maybe new development pays its way, and not so much the buyer, but the developer. What, how are they gonna pay their way?
So, right now, we are, we just started the Nexus study for the, for a capacity fee. So that'll be what we're gonna call water capacity fee. And now that we have the $429 million program, we have the operation and maintenance costs. We use that data to then design the rates that you're considering tonight. We will use that same data to calculate the rates that, that new connections or changed connections have to make to the system. To set, we had to just get, what's the, what's the cost of the program? That's the 429. We have the O&amp;M costs included. Take that data, and now we use it to calculate what the capacity fee needs to be for new connections or changed connections. Same process we just went through to do this rate you're considering tonight.
Okay. Can you talk to me a little bit about the surface water?
The surface water? I can talk to you a little bit about the surface water, yes.
Okay.
What's the specific...
Well, what I understand is Fresno has surface water, outline communities don't.
There are, and I regret, regrettably, I don't know who Gary, all the people Gary serves. I know he serves us, and I know he serves Clovis. I don't know who, what other local agencies that he serves.
So I think, Tommy, the question is, which communities around us right now are pretty much solely reliant upon groundwater?
Am I understanding, and I'm gonna look...
Madera County, South Madera County?
Oh, yeah, Cassie probably knows.
Okay.
So you're wanting to know how many, how many utilities rely strictly on surface water versus strictly on groundwater? Yeah, I would say the majority in Fresno County relies strictly on groundwater. Same is true with Madera County. So I've pointed out before, the city of Fresno is really in a unique position in that they have surface water that they could take advantage of.
Okay. Got it, got it. And then, you know, one of the reasons I brought up the, the, the point about the costs going up, is that, you know, you have a projected date, you said like maybe November 2015, and if you're not able to really get that date or whatever, it's, your costs still continue to go up. So, that's, I mean, but that's in any, any type of development that, or construction.
Right. So the contractors are gonna factor into their bid prices, the start date, and if we move the start date, they will factor in what the cost escalator will be. That's where you'll pick up that cost change, is when the contractors start preparing their bids.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Serrato, I wanna thank you and your board members for being here today. A lot of the questions that I, or some of the questions I was gonna ask you were asked by Councilmember Soria. And, you know, just, and again, you know, looking at the, at the cost, the question I have for you is, will there be additional cost regarding storage and conveyance for the, for the water deliveries?
Yeah, absolutely. That's gonna be one of the discussions that we're gonna have in terms of what it's gonna cost to do that. You know, storage isn't free. The city, just to give you an example, we entered into agreements with the city of Cur, or I'm sorry, city of Clovis, to do the storage and banking facilities with them, and it was upwards. It was probably somewhere around ten to twelve million dollars to complete those projects.
Ten to twelve?
That's correct.
Uh-huh. To complete that. Okay. Now, you've heard all the discussion and everything, is, was there anything else you think you might want to add or clarify?
Seems like we've done a lot of things, but maybe one of the things that, that I'd like to, you know, leave you with and be very clear, is that in our discussions, we covered a lot of things. But understand that I wasn't standing here trying to negotiate anything with the council or anybody here today.
Right.
You know, because we, obviously, that's gonna occur in a different venue. But I do appreciate the opportunity to come here and, and address the council, because I think there's some issues here that are not just important to the city, but to our growers as well, our farmers that we represent. We understand that groundwater is a big issue. We understand the Groundwater Sustainability Act. We're, we're part of a group that's advancing that and moving that forward. We're involved with legislation and trying to head off some of the things that we're gonna have to deal with. But the only way we're gonna get to sustainability is we're all gonna have to come together and work together to get us there.
And do you, do you, I mean, do you feel pretty good about reaching an agreement in eight to 12 months?
I mean, if the city said, yeah, just go do anything you want today, I think we could probably get that done, but I doubt that that's gonna happen, okay?
Okay.
So, so my, and it's a very good question, but I think the bigger issues are the ones that we're gonna, we're gonna begin to negotiate. We, we've essentially picked the fruit off the lower, lower, lower edges, and, and so now the bigger issues are, are gonna be the ones that we're gonna have to address.
Mm-hmm.
So it's gonna be a while.
Okay.
And hopefully, we get there.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, it, you know, a lot of the, having those, to me, an agreement in place is, is really, it's, it's important, if not, if not critical, and you know, if, to me, if you're, if you're a businessperson, you try to get all your, your agreements in place, or if you're buying a house or a car, you try to get everything locked down before you, you put your name on the dotted line, and to me, the, the conveyance agreement, that's a big deal. It's a big one. And, and so, okay. I really want to thank everybody, really appreciate it, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Member Cantaro. The screen is clear, so it does, probably my opportunity to make a few remarks. When council, when Steve Brandau was council president, he always said that by the time it was time for him to speak, everything's been said. And that's very true. It's true. It's, I seem to have very little substance to add to the conversation. And so it reminds me of the old adage that everything's already been said, but hasn't been said by me. So I still reserve my right to make a few comments. And I've really gone back and forth on how I even wanted to address this issue tonight. And so I'm gonna start with some thank yous, because I, I think it's, it's appropriate, and you've heard my colleagues start by thanking our staff, and, and I think as we wind down this night, I certainly want to do the same thing. As I've said previous times before, you know, this council has undergone some major issues in the last few months, and the burden of that, although we, you know, we do have to make the decisions, the burden of that is really on the staff, to give us the information to make sure that we have enough information to make an appropriate decision. And we're not always easy to deal with. So I certainly want to thank staff. You know, Tommy in your department, Bruce for sure, Renee, of course. You know, really just thank you guys for putting this all together. This has been a very, very long, lengthy process. This has been a couple, a little over a couple of years we've been, we've been at this. And so, I don't normally do this, but I think it's appropriate. I want to thank my colleagues. This is, Councilmember Brand mentioned earlier tonight that this may in fact be one of the most important votes that he, he'll have taken in the six years that he's been here. And I'll say that the four years I've been here, for sure, this is the most important vote that I've taken thus far. And it was a lot of work getting to this point on our part. There was, you know, this was a, this was, to get here tonight, this, this vote's gonna go, in my opinion, overwhelmingly in support of the rate increase, but I'm gonna tell you guys, this was a very difficult process for the policymakers. And my colleagues did an amazing job of rolling up their sleeves and all contributing something to make it better. You know, I want to thank, obviously, Lee Brand and Clint Olivier for today bringing their oversight. I can't remember the mouthful it was, but your oversight committee that you brought, you guys, although it wasn't directly related to this project per se, we do know that this project, proposed project, will fall under that oversight, and it's very timely, very appropriate. It's added value and comfort for me tonight to be able to be supportive of this. I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Cantaro. You know, for months and over a year, for, for those of you, and a lot of you have been with us in this process, you've listened to Councilmember Cantaro talk about the need to protect low-income and fixed-income persons in this city. And when we first started this conversation, and Bruce, you remember, a couple of years ago, the initial answer was, we can't do anything, because of the Prop 218 process. We started with, we don't think we can do 18, we don't think we can do anything, but because of Councilmember Cantaro constantly saying, we've gotta find a way, there has to be a way, I don't know what the way is, but there has to be a way, we come to you today with a low-income rate. That's legal, and that will serve a lot of citizens. And it's because of the work of Councilmember Cantaro still making that issue front and center. We had a couple of weeks ago, about a month ago, and I got a new nickname from my friend, Steve Brandau. He said he put the brakes on, on, on things about a month ago, so you are now Steve Breakpads Brandau. You know, 'cause, you know, he, he put the... Well, so you know, we have Breakpads Brandau over here, that, that really, that did a great job, and, and saying, hold on, I'm listening to my constituents, I'm a steward, and I want to make sure that we're, we're getting everything we can. So he stops the process in midstream and, and really challenges our state partners to bring some more money home for us here for our residents. Great work. Great work. And he mentioned that Councilmember Soria and I were in that meeting, listen, we were just, we were glad to be there, but it was really your effort, Steve, that made that happen, and those were valuable. Somebody said 12% isn't, isn't a lot, you know, I would beg to differ. It's a considerable amount of money. You know, Councilmember Capriolio a moment ago reminded us, you know, we've heard a lot about conservation. Well, it was Councilmember Capriolio and Brand that said, we do need to conserve, right? It was their contribution to the entire water conversation. You know, a lot of us forget that this water conversation isn't in a silo. It isn't this or that. Sometimes it sounds like that, and some of the, present some of the comments today may make it appear that it's this or that, but Councilmember Capriolio reminded us that conservation is a part of the overall strategy. It's a part of that. And just tonight, we had our newest Councilmember Soria, who came in, hit the ground running, and said, listen, I have some concerns, and I want to make sure that when we size this project, it's sized right. And I want to make sure that we're protecting our ratepayers for the right size of the project. So are there safeguards that we can put in here to make sure that we're not overdoing it? Those are the right questions. And we, and then there were actions taken, taken in that way to, to secure that. So I say that because you don't see that all the time. And the city of Fresno should be very proud of this. I'm very proud of my colleagues tonight, to all the contributions that they have individually made in our entire water conversation over the last couple of years, is, is pretty remarkable to me, and it doesn't happen every day. And I'm proud to serve, serve with these guys. And, madam. And last but certainly not least, I want to, I want to thank our mayor, who is the most resilient, tenacious person that I know, and was not gonna take no for an answer. And she worked with us, and worked with us, and worked with us, and stayed patient with us through this entire process to get us here today. It was a remarkable bit of leadership, to do something that no council's done in over 40 years, to get us to this point. It's remarkable leadership. And so I say all that today because what you saw, Fresno residents, was government that worked together. And we hear so much all the time about how awful government is, about how terrible things are, and no one gets along, everyone's fighting, and everything's bad, everyone's lying. Well, that didn't happen here. That did not happen here. It didn't happen in the city of Fresno. Our residents should be proud. Now, some of you may not agree with how we vote tonight, I will, I will grant you that, and maybe you have some, some legitimate issues to take with that. But our residents should be proud of a city government that's trying to work together, that has legitimate disagreements on issues. And don't misunderstand that we legitimately do disagree with one another, but yet, this council and this administration and this staff found a way to incorporate the ideas of its citizens, our individual concerns, along with the staff needs and concerns, to bring to you a better product. And everyone had some input. So that's my contribution to tonight's conversation. I could go on and on, and I could, listen, I, I could talk about how sacred water is, and I love how our water, our water director, I promise I won't, how our water director talked about our water issue being a public health issue. Thank you for reminding us. Thank you for reminding us of that, because we forget. So in the interest of time, and because everything that could have been said has been said, and I will, see, you guys, you guys see all the notes I have up here, you guys should be happy. I'm going to make one additional amendment, Councilmember Brandau. It's very minor. I was, been informed that we actually have, Councilmember Soria made an amendment regarding future settlement payments to go down, to buy down rates for our ratepayers. I would like to expand that to current. If there are any current settlement funds that are available to, to buy those rates down, I would like to expand that to that.
Settlements for, for what?
For to, to, to buy down the rates for our ratepayers.
What kind of settlements? Other lawsuit settlements?
Yeah, we have some other ones. The, the city attorney informed me that we actually have some settlements that are, that are available to us. The city manager confirmed that there may be some that we can use for that.
Yeah, I think the question is, on the affordable program, in the event there's an overprescription, there are other dollars that have to discuss this with the city attorney that would be available to backstop that program.
Right.
All right. To the extent those funds haven't already been committed to something else.
And to take down the rates.
Mm-hmm. Just to expand it, so we don't have to wait for future settlements, we can use the funds that already exist now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll add that, and better ask Councilman Olivier.
Councilmember, all right, that's great. So with that additional final amendment, that has been my now contribution to the water discussion for tonight. I will actually call for, call for the vote. Well, I'm sorry, I want to allow our mayor to, to, to give any final comments in this as you're our guest tonight in the council chambers.
You know, I don't know that I can possibly add much to this discussion. For anyone who follows me on Twitter, you can see throughout the night, I have been tweeting the comments that our council members have been making. And if you go and look at the sum total of what we've heard tonight, we've heard from Councilmember Brand that there's a new Fresno, and it's the Fresno that is turning the corner on bad fiscal management and moving towards hope and the prosperity of the residents who are here. We've heard from Councilmember Capriolio that he is not going to be the one to kick this can down the road further, not on his watch. I think most, most everyone has commented about their interest and willingness to put their own personal political careers on the line to do what's right for the people of Fresno. And I think it's a remarkable moment, and I think it's very noteworthy. And I think that the fact that this subject, water, has brought this form of leadership to the forefront is also significant. And I can think of no more precious resource that we should be hearing these very words from our elected leaders, we should be hearing these sorts of things, certainly when it comes to water. So I commend all of you and echo Council President Baines' comments that all the amendments that have been made have strengthened this initiative and strengthened this proposal. And I also recognize the, the opponents of this, of this rate plan, and how their insistence that we take more time, that we deliberate further, I concur, that in fact, the plan is better as a result of that. So in that spirit, I think it's time we move forward and put this particular issue in the rearview mirror, because there are still plenty of challenges for us to tackle as a community. But I'm confident, thanks to the leadership on this dais, that we're up for the challenge.
And thank you, Madam Mayor. With that, we have a motion, we have a...
And thank you, Madam Mayor. With that, we have a motion, we have a second, we have multiple amendments that I don't think I need to read right, city attorney. And so, all those in favor? Aye. All those oppose?
No. I'm a one.
All right. Item passes six to one. Thank you, guys.
This is an historic, can we have a quick group photo of, on the dais? Quick group photo on the dais. It's an historic. If administration would join with the council, we have unity to a reasonable degree.